I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar. Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Croftick. Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. And Councilmember Searcy.
All right. They're in the back, they're coming. We just had, just for folks to know, we just had a PEPCO presentation on the Tacoma Park Sligo Underground Project on Eastern Tacoma and Fenton Avenues. We did show that live, and there will be a recording of that if you would like to see that. And so, we're, there are no changes to our agenda this evening. Looking at our upcoming meetings. Next week, Wednesday, March 6th, our regular city council meeting is here at 7:30. It's a busy night, March 6th, I'm gonna say. We have the new deputy chief is being sworn in at 6 o'clock prior to that meeting. And in addition to that, at 7:00, we will have a presentation on accessory dwelling units. Just to provide information, that's something that is being discussed at the county level. And we thought, not to make you go to the county in Rockville, but to hear a presentation here in the community to make it a little easier for folks. We're gonna have it here. So, next Wednesday, start at 6 o'clock with the swearing-in of our new deputy police of chief. Deputy chief, deputy chief police officer, and whatever. And then, the ADU presentation. Our meeting will start at 7:30. We will have another presentation of the resident survey and the police department's annual report. And then, we'll have a voting session, tentatively, depending on how the work session goes tonight, on a resolution adopting the amended youth council charter, resolutions providing for appointments to committees, and a resolution authorizing the closure of Ann Street for Tacoma Langley CDA Spring Fest. Our work session next week on March 6th will be a discussion of a climate change emergency resolution. Then, on Wednesday, March 13th, we will have 7:30, a public hearing on the proposed ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. That's our work session this evening. We'll get a report from our youth council that evening. And then, we'll have a voting session on resolutions adopting our FY 2020 Green Team priorities, adopting our FY 2020 council priorities, and a resolution declaring climate emergency. Our work session that evening will be on economic development, and we'll have an opportunity to have before council our new economic development manager. On Wednesday, March 20th, we'll have a presentation on an update on library renovation, and a voting session, the first reading ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs, ordinance regarding plastic straws.
And that night also, we'll have a presentation from NGC on what they've heard, their revised by Wright Plan, and what they've heard from the DRC committee the previous evening.
Great. And that'll be on, right, on the 20th. And we have more information regarding the Tacoma Junction project that we'll get to later this evening. All right. As, we'll move on now, we have one voting item this evening. It's the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2019 budget amendment number three. Are there any public comments on the voting item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our voting session. Again, we're voting on the second reading ordinance approving the FY 2019 budget amendment number three. I don't, there haven't been any changes since the first reading ordinance. Will someone like to move the ordinance? Councilman Searcy moved, do I have a second? Councilmember Siemens, second. Any questions? Discussion? All right, since this is a second reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
Councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala.
Yes.
Councilmember Croftick.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Searcy.
Hi.
All right, next, we have other public comments. I had a request, is Ms. Cordis here, or Mr. Kelly? Ms. Kelly, would you like, you requested additional time, would you like to start now?
I'll wait till those get passed out. Good evening, mayor, council. It's good to be back in the chambers, sharing some more positive stuff with you guys. I'm Burn Kelly, I live in Ward 3, and I'm requesting that the mayor and the city council develop legislation that can change the city's charter. The proposed changes are intended to create equity and parity in our city government. Whereas, the city manager's job is to run the business of the incorporation slash municipality, and whereas, the city mayor's job is to represent the taxpayers' businesses and the rights of the residents, citizens, and visitors. Therefore, those two leaders need to have parity in power and in responsibilities, with equal oversight and accountability. Thereby, I'm proposing, number one, make the mayor's position a full-time job, which it probably already is in your mind, Kate, make the mayor's position a full-time job for a four-year term. Number two, make the mayor's salary and the city managers the same. Cap the salary at the median income of the county, which for better or for worse is currently $105,000. That's the median income of Montgomery County presently. Whereas presently, the council member's position pays so little that it inadvertently creates economic segregation. Therefore, only those who can afford the time can afford to run for and hold office. Therefore, those are luxury positions, as is the mayor's position. And only those who can afford the time and the expenses of running for those positions and performing the duties and responsibilities of those positions can run for office. Therefore, candidates have to be in an economic and work status that is actually very, is actually a very elite and small pool of prospective candidates. Therefore, make the council member's position a full-time job for a two-year term. Cap the council member's salary at the median income of the department heads of the city. Number six, the city manager with the city mayor shall appoint and direct the elected council members to positions to work with the department heads in both their areas of interest and expertise. Thereby, the following conditions must be put in place. In order to afford these changes, the city must create a hiring freeze and reduce the city staff by six positions through either early retirement incentives or termination of 20-year or more tenured positions. I suggest additional conditions that the city manager, the department heads, and the city politicians must be a resident of the city for a minimum of five years, and must remain a resident of the city while employed by the city. Some of this information has been passed around, and there are some gross calculations about how our taxes have skyrocketed 27% in five years, while inflation is only up 7%. So, they're on a pace to double every 12 years. That, from the prior city manager to the current city manager, the salary went up 80%. And, the, well, that's about it for now. But I appreciate you entertaining this idea, because as you know, many of you ran unopposed. And, that's not really good participation in a democracy, from my point of view. So, I'd like to see a structural fix, because I don't know how else to fix it. So, that's why I've spelled this out, and I hope you all will take it under consideration, so that we can have a more vigorous pool of candidates and more participation by people throughout our stratosphere. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Cordis, would you like to go next?
Good evening, calling Cordis, Ward 1, and I'm speaking on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma. Five of us piled into our super-efficient hybrid Hyundai last week, because we follow the science on climate change. And we went to testify on the small cell towers and 5G bills in the Maryland House of Delegates, because we follow the science on 5G and small cell towers. Which is, you know, plausible reason, plausible evidence building for the health and environmental negative impacts of radio frequency emissions, radiation. So, the two bills that we testified for, the council has written letters opposing the truly horrible bill 654, and supporting what is a bad bill in our eyes, but the lesser of two evils, HB 1020. And we just wanted to kind of report back to you about what we, what our impressions were from that hearing. It was about a five-hour hear, six-hour hearing, I think. And, the kind of bottom lines that came out of it is that, even though the FCC has these very tight restrictions on local governments, there's a lot of litigation right now. Tacoma Park's part of a lawsuit, Montgomery County, lots of other jurisdictions. And this bill is one, it's an industry-written bill. There was a lobbyist from one of the carriers who kept saying, "Our bill, you know, we've been trying to get MML and municipal, Maryland Municipal League and the County Association to pass our bill, to, we've been negotiating with them to, you know, to take up our bill, but they just keep resisting for some reason." So, what came out in the question and answers with the delegates is that this is industry's insurance policy. So, if they lose in court, they will have state laws. They've gotten them passed in about 21 states, very similar bill, it's their bill. And the idea is, if the FCC restrictions fall, then they will have even tougher restrictions in this legislation they're getting passed in every state, or they're trying to. Last year, they didn't have luck in Maryland, they're trying again. And the new chair of the House Economic Matters Committee is very gung-ho about 5G. And he made it very clear in the hearing, as he introduced his own bill, that, by golly, that bill's gonna pass. Those, whether that bill passes, or, you know, local governments lie down and just let industry do this, it's gonna go forward. So, that in itself was, you know, that was an eye-opener, to see what this was really all about. The other thing is that our own delegate, Lauren Charcutian, was asked some very tough questions. And from her and other people's questions, it was the industry basically conceded that, yes, the reason they want to do this in public rights of ways, because it's cheaper than having to negotiate with private property owners. They just came right out and admitted that. So, it is a land grab, and, you know, it is public property that's at stake here. The other thing is just the incredible hype about 5G. Everybody who came to testify in favor of 654 and against HB 1020, because they thought it was too weak for industry, didn't serve industry well enough, had nothing but positive, all of the positive promises of 5G. None of the kind of, okay, let's take a step back and think about the potential harms and the potential benefits. Let's really think this through, let's encourage a robust public conversation. Where better to have that kind of deliberation than at the local level? No, it was all about, we know we've got to race forward with 5G. We cannot wait to let local governments and the people of the United States actually decide whether they'd like to go forward with this technology and how. No, we need to have the federal government, and if the federal government won't do it, we need to have the states forcing the local governments to do this. So, that's where we're at. The second bill, HB 1020, is open now to amendments. The person who sponsored it is the woman who's been in the news about, you know, the terrible racist comments that she made. So, that complicates things. And she, but at the hearing, she volunteered that, yes, she was open to amending that bill. So, that bad bill could very well get worse. So, that leads us to our urging the city council to please take this up as a priority. I don't believe it's on your list of priorities for this year. But the session, the Maryland session is very short, and our ordinance is very likely to fall. If 654 passes, our ordinance is history. And if 1020 passes, there's still some real problems, especially if it's amended in a bad way. So, we urge you to be in touch with all of our delegates, and let them know that this is really important to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cordis, thank you for that update. Mr. Lovelace, would you like to go next?
Yes, this is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. I want to, first thing I want to do is give a thanks to a couple of people. The first one is Doris Thompson, who does my hair up and everything, she put this braid in. And she's helped take care of me, she's my nursing care. And she works 11, about 11 hours a day, and I want to thank her for the job she's doing. And also, I want to thank Nora Reno for bringing me to the meeting tonight. I met her last November at the Catástrof on the Mall, also known as the Burning Man Celebration. It was November 11th last year. And I want to tell everybody, like I said one time before, work for peace, and peace will work for you. All my friends that I've met now are in, about the peace movement in one way or another. They're usually highly active. And they help me get to demonstrations and stuff. And also, also, I want to ask you people if we could get the hygiene stations for the homeless set up as soon as, as soon as we can, because Washington Adventist Hospital is closing in June, I understand, they're transferring. So, after they transfer, I was wondering if we could use that as a homeless facility, you know, part of it. And that would be great, because we can't let another homeless person die, it's not necessary in its country. And we've got buildings that we're not even using, such as that hospital, that's coming up, it won't be used much. And that would be a valuable space to save lives, it still, can still carry on its mission. Saving lives and making lives better and brighter for others. So, I was thinking of that, you know, because then we'll have no excuse for someone dying in sub-zero temperatures. And if a policeman sees him out there in sub-zero, we'll be able to ask him and take him to a place where it's warm, they can get hygiene and everything else. And also, we can, and if they say, "No, I'm not going, I'm gonna stay outside," we can say, "No, you're not, you're not, we're not prepared for this kind of weather." So, and then if they still say, "No," we can arrest them on not knowing right from wrong, or danger to yourself and others. Because if it's dangerous to yourself and others, you need to be taken in for a psych review, and still you'll get them out of the cold. And I think we should do something about this problem. So, and also, there's a couple of actions coming up soon. We got the schools in Maryland that are going down to the White House on March 4th, on March 14th. And they're gonna stage another big walkout for gun control. So, I want to bring those things up, and thank you people very much for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace.
Love it, love it.
Any other public comments this evening?
I'm Priscilla Labavitz, I live on Birch Avenue in Ward 1, and I'm also a friend of the Tacoma Park Rec Center. I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for sharing our enthusiasm for building a new rec center on New Hampshire Avenue with affordable housing on top. We are excited that you either have or plan to make the rec center, raise it to priority status. And we realize we'll have to be creative and open about solving the parking problems that are, that exist already at the rec center. But I think we can work that out. And I also want to thank you for putting up with our argumentative and fractious citizenry. You are all patient and tolerant, and I guess that's your job, but you ought to be thanked for that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Hill from Ward 2, and I'm with the Last Plastics Straw Tacoma Park. And I'd like to update you on our efforts with Tacoma Park Restaurants and Markets. Currently, we have 52 places of business on our list to reach out to, and we've met with about all but 10 of them. When we meet with them, we let them know about our mission, and we stress that we're there to help them make the transition to paper straws. We give them a sample of a paper straw from World Centric, so they can test it out firsthand to see how sturdy it is. We do that because we understand that many have experienced some flimsy paper straws, and so we explain to them that not all paper straws are made the same. The World Centric samples we provide cost only .024 cents per straw. They're less expensive than Aardvark brand straws, Aardvark brand paper straws. And depending on where these businesses source their plastic straws from, the paper straws they buy may or may not cost significantly more money. We also stress to them to only provide straws upon request, and that by doing so, they could save money. We've also been asking them to complete our survey. And we have a version for paper straw users and for plastic straw users, both are in English and Spanish. But unfortunately, we've only received about 11 surveys, and many are incomplete. We've asked restaurants to provide us with information on how much they currently spend on plastic straws per month, per month, and how many they use per month. But most have only provided, most have not provided this information. Some have told me they simply have no idea how much they spend per month on straws. Another challenge we're having is with the large chains like 7-Eleven, Starbucks, Taco Bell, and Subway, we've been told that the survey has been passed on to corporate, and that there's nothing else the local staff can do. I personally plan to reach out to each corporate office and ask them to provide their feedback, and I hope to provide you with at least some answers in the next few weeks. On a positive note, Roscoe's, which previously used plastic straws, has switched to paper upon request, and stainless steel straws at the bar. And they advised us that feedback from patrons has been, quote, "all positive, patrons appreciate us striving to be environmentally conscious," unquote. Finally, when we meet with restaurants, we offer them our starter kit, and that includes 200 World Centric straws, posters and flyers to promote their efforts to switch to paper and to educate patrons about why plastic straws are bad, and a training seat for staff. So far, businesses, five businesses, all on New Hampshire Avenue have received starter kits. It's Los Pollos, Wale Ethiopian Restaurant, Mid-Atlantic Seafood, Tony's Villa Pizza, and the Caribbean Restaurant. Los Pollos, Mid-Atlantic, and Tony's Villa all have beverages and bottles. They tell me they really don't get a lot of people asking for straws. The Caribbean Market tells me that some fountain beverages, they sell some fountain beverages, but estimated they only go about through 800 straws per year. And they were concerned about costs, but they're happy about the starter kit. And finally, Wale Ethiopian Restaurant, they're a restaurant and bar, and they are, they're excited, and they actually have no hesitation about switching.
Great, thank you, Ms. Hill, and I want to say thank you for the straws we were given this evening. So, they're very cute, thank you very much. James?
Yes, hello, I'm James Lepinski. I'm not a resident of Tacoma Park, but I've, I've used to be a volunteer at Tacoma Radio. And I was just wondering about some, like, do a lot, do businesses that work in, that are in Tacoma Park, do they have like a form of like Title IX, or is like, is there another form of like sexual harassment? Like, thing that can work? What I'm asking is like, so I've witnessed firsthand a lot of like sexual harassment from people at Tacoma Radio, and the management hasn't done anything about it. And I was wondering if there's like a law that can like have them put in place where people can actually receive their, like, deserved punishment?
Why don't we have the city manager give you her card, and we can follow this up one-on-one? It might be better that way.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thank you, mayor.
Hi, good evening, I'm Dennis Borum, and I serve here on the City's Committee on the Environment. And I'm also working on the plastic straw ban. And just wanted to comment on your definitions of both plastic beverage straw and plastic stirs, to say I appreciate that the biological-based polymers are also listed on that section of the ban. They were initially touted as a good biodegradable option, but as studies are now showing, they are not really biodegradable. In order for them to decompose, they require what's known as an industrial-grade composting facility, of which there are only about 100 in the country. And if that requires that in a sustained time for them to be in a microbial digester, that's 140 degrees Fahrenheit or more for a sustained period of time, otherwise, they don't biodegrade. So, thank you for having that in there, it is appropriate that they be in that category and not with the paper or sugarcane straws as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think you probably just saved us about a half hour's discussion this evening. So, I very much appreciate that comment. Any other public comments tonight?
Good evening, I'm Jessica Landman from Ward 1. I'm here today to explain why Community Vision for Tacoma has formally I'm here today to explain why community vision for Tacoma has formally requested that the Park and Planning Commission put the development review process for Tacoma Junction on pause. First, let me say that resorting to outside lawyers was never our first choice. We've come before you a number of times to point to significant process errors and information gaps to try and avoid such an outcome. For example, we warned that the building across, that building this thing across two separate parcels was not allowed. This issue still remains to be resolved. We warned that the developer was out trying to buy development rights because they had miscalculated zoning laws, and we warned you that the building design being submitted was not the one that the city had authorized, but was over twenty percent smaller due to that zoning miscalculation. Yet, the city seemed surprised to learn this officially, even though we had alerted you through testimony, because the staff of the city had declined to review the new plans until the application was deemed complete by Park and Planning. Yes, it is a new and different building design, not the one you authorized. Critically, it is smaller, but it is not better. It could have been changed to give us more public space since it's smaller, and it might have been changed to make delivery and issues easier to deal with on the site, but it was not. NDC concedes in their submission that major changes to the intersection would be needed to avoid failing a traffic test. Their proposal singles out one specific intersection redesign from last year's traffic study, a design that would eliminate the all-red signal, would do away with BY Morrison Park, and would take out the long-sought Grant Crosswalk. By submitting this building design on behalf of itself and the city of Tacoma Park, its partner in development, and relying on this roadway change in their design, NDC does two things. They make it hard to understand why SHA would bother with a detailed study of the Tacoma Junction, the long-awaited Vision Study, which is about to begin, because what's the point if this redesign has already been green-lighted by the city? And they represent that the city has approved this building redesign and this roadway redesign choice. But really, you haven't had a chance to study it yet. We told Park and Planning that the city needs to take the time to actually review this design, share with the community, hear back from us, and decide clearly that this is a design that you want to put your voice behind. We know that the city manager has urged you in her writings to move forward with the previously planned approach of having the Park and Planning folks look at it now, but we say, wait, do your job, give us a chance to comment before that action is taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
I'm going to greet you guys a little bit differently today. It's aloha, aloha, mayors and council administrations. I'm visiting from Hawaii, but I, I gave you those straws. Thank you. But I went to high school in Rockville, and I ma-, I graduated from University of Maryland. But when I went on to study for my grad school in Hawaii, where I learned aloha. Well, aloha is, doesn't, it doesn't mean hi or bye, but it actually means love. So the Hawaiian actually lives with generosity and respect. It's alo-, aloha is a way of living in harmony with nature and with each other. So the reason why I brought up this project is just to let you know that the decisions that you make here in Tacoma Park, there are a lot of effects to, even though Hawaii is so far away, it does make a negative or positive impact on the land. For the reasons, did you know that there are no snakes on Hawaii at all?
I know.
Yeah? Raise your hand, you actually did it.
I did, yeah.
Okay. Well, the, the ecosystems of Hawaii is very fragile, and it's, it's very different. So many people, Hawaiians and scientists, have been trying to protect and preserve it. Invasive basic, they, uh, inves-, invasive species like bamboo. Our project is taking down the, eliminating the bamboo, turn it into straws. But then, it's actually a conservation project. We are trying to regrow, reforest the native species. So, secondly, I want to also address, this project is not about straws, it's about conservation. And it's also addressing the job loss in Hawaii. Ninety percent, ninety percent of stuff that we use in Hawaii, including produce and everyday supplies, is actually imported onto the islands. So that means that takes away jobs away from the local economies. So this project is to, just to give jobs to people in Hawaii. Last point is the oceans that surround us. We are fighting desperately with overfishing. So the Hawaiians are fishing with poles, but these are big giants nets that's, that just scooping up everything, including dolphins and turtles and corals. So we land, we have issues, and ocean, we have issues. So dishes, decisions that you make here does impact us a lot, so I appreciate you listening.
Great. Could you just repeat your name? Sorry.
I am Tiffany.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, and thank you for the presence. All right, any other public comments this evening?
Arthur David Olson, Tacoma Park. In a recent council meeting, I heard the city manager mention the current unpredictability of action at federal level. The city manager hoped to keep some capacity in reserve to deal with surprises. I've also heard Councilmember Seaman's view that this is a time not only to prioritize, but also to de-prioritize. And at last week's meeting of the council with department heads, I heard many of them mention staffing as a challenge. Tonight, the council discusses an updated version of its priorities document. The version agreed to last year lists fifteen goals. Tonight's draft has fifteen and a half goals, counting discussion of Vision Zero as half a goal. This is moving in the wrong direction when it comes to dealing with surprises and easing staffing burdens. Working toward expanding goals would also require increased taxes. I hope the council will decrease rather than increase the number of goals it pursues in the coming budget year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Mariel, and my comment is short tonight. I know later in the agenda, you will be discussing appointments to committees, and I really encourage this to be a reflective, deep, and most of all, specific conversation. What will be your indicators of success in terms of appointments and diversity on committees, boards, and commissions? So my, again, my encouragement to you is specificity, so you know you have outcomes that indicate success.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our legislative update from Council McCostick.
Yes, so I have a lot to report because we didn't have a meeting last week, so we have a lot of new testimony that we have submitted. First of all, last Monday was District Twenty Night, and there were a number of residents and council members who attended that in Annapolis. It was a great evening, and we had a great opportunity to hear from the delegates and our senator regarding their priorities and the work that they've been doing. Some of the bills that we have supported testimony on include HB 1016, which we supported. This is a bill that would add a racial impact statement to future bills in the legislature that are related to felonies and misdemeanors. We also will be weighing in on SB 713, which is the MML cell tower bill, so we'll be weighing in and support of that. HB 654, we will be opposing, or we have submitted testimony in opposition to, that is the industry bill related to cell towers. HB 730 and SB 660, we have submitted testimony in supportive, that is, community choice aggregation, which would allow counties and municipalities to negotiate the purchase of renewable energy. We have submitted testimony in support of HB 313, Purple Line Construction and Business Support related to the Purple Line. We have submitted support for a bill that would, would prevent the moving forward of the Beltway project, that is HB 102, SB 442. And we have also support, submitted testimony in support of SB 516, Clean Energy Jobs, which is the renewables bill. And then this morning, we had a discussion with our state lobbyist and are planning on and working on testimony in support of two additional bills, HB 1266, which would establish an economic development program or fund and would benefit the city, as well as HB 277, which is related to greenhouse gas emissions in transportation. So staff have been very busy, a big thank you to Jason and other staff who have been reviewing the proposed bills and providing us with information about how they might impact the city. And then we've been working on submitting testimony. Another note, I had a couple of other notes here. I guess the other one I wanted to note was, on Friday morning, the Montgomery County delegation is scheduled tentatively to vote on Janelle Wilkins' Just Cause Abiction Bill, and at that time, hopefully, that will move forward, and then we would submit support in, testimony in support of that bill formally at that time.
Thank you so much for the update and all of your work on that. Councilman Kovar, did you ever?
Just one, one comment regarding, thank you for the presentation, and just because it came up before, and I appreciated the presentation about the cell tower legislation, I would just note two things about, there's the Bad Industry Bill and the other bill, and that's done through the Maryland Municipal League, of which we're a member, and in fact, it is the, preventing that type of preemption is the Maryland Municipal League's sole legislative goal for this year. So I just want to be clear, that is an additional sort of super priority of ours beyond all the regular priorities that we're working on here. And I would add one other point, and I understand if that bill were to be weakened, it would be bad. It does include a savings clause, which specifically says that any legislation that a municipality adopts, like ours, or if another city does up through the end of, through January of 2020, so over the course of the next year, would be protected even if it had stronger provisions than that bill does. So in that way, although it would set up a, to some extent, a statewide regime, it would enable individual municipalities to take additional steps if they wish. So I, I just want to clarify that. I agree that if it was weakened, that would be problematic. Thanks.
I also want to add that will, our lobbyist is continuing to monitor the bill, and if there are amendments, she'll definitely let us know, and we can be on top of that as well. Councilwoman Zier?
So did our lobbyists talk at all about HB 150, which provides tax incentives for businesses that are looking to expand within opportunity zones? For folks who are not aware, the Tacoma Langley Crossroads area is an opportunity zone, and this bill would perhaps provide state-level tax breaks for, for those businesses that want to expand. However, it actually creates an exclusion currently for retail businesses. So we've notified Delegate Wilkins, and I don't know if we would need to write some sort of testimony. I followed the lobbyist, but I haven't heard anything yet.
Yeah, we did very briefly discuss it, and she noted the issue related to retail, and she was going to, I think, follow up on that and get a little more information, and we'll, we'll have it as soon as possible.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. All right, now moving on to council comments. Any council comments? Councilwoman Zier?
Oh.
You're the first one?
I'm the first one this week? Man, usually I'm, I'm last, hoping, by the time I go, everything has been said. So just want to reiterate my appreciation to Grace Wiggins and yourself, city manager, and everyone who contributed and participated this weekend. We had a meet and greet with the owners in Tacoma Overlook condominiums, and, and the mayor as well was there. And so there were so many owners and residents who were so appreciative that we were able to take time out, and also had an opportunity yesterday to run in from, on the metro to, to one of the owners, and she was like, it was so nice, and she had her Tacoma Park bag. So I'm just really appreciative that we have such wonderful staff here who can think creatively about ways in which we can, we can effectively reach all of our residents and engage everyone. And I think that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Great. Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah, just very quickly, Ward Two office hours are back tomorrow. I'm tired of waiting for the weather to get better, so we're just going to do it at Spring Mill tomorrow, five to six thirty. Anybody in the, in the ward that wants to come talk about anything, just drop in on your way home from work, or walk in if you don't work.
Councilwoman Kostick?
One more, one more. Lincoln Avenue sidewalks, were you going to touch? I don't know what's, I don't know. I think with the nicer weather, there's been a lot of people outside, and so there's been some noticing of the fact that the Lincoln Avenue sidewalks are in fact not a hundred percent complete. And the plan is to finish the spots that are, that were skipped because it's hard to lay impervious pavement in the middle of the winter. And then, around the trees. Yeah, the pervious pavement, you're right, sorry. And then right after that, in this, later this spring, will be the stormwater work. So some of the places that look kind of muddy with straw in them are where stormwater retention facilities are going to go. And, and so they'll, they will, I understand from public works, they're just going to have to wait, wait till later in the spring before that can be done. So that, those were my two updates.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. About a week and a half ago, on February fifteenth, I had an opportunity to meet with DC Councilmember Brandon Todd to discuss the Pepco work and DDOT project for Eastern Avenue. And a little earlier this evening, we had a chance to talk with Pepco and discuss their project a little more. But it was a very fruitful meeting with Councilmember Todd, and I really appreciate his attention to the issue and his willingness to cooperate with us on this. He is going to work on planning a meeting that would involve community members both on the DC side and in Tacoma Park to discuss the ongoing very poor condition of Eastern Avenue with a series of different entities, which I think is really what we need, is to get everybody together in one room and have that discussion. And so he's working on coordinating with DDOT as well as Pepco and Washington Gas to try to coordinate a meeting so that everyone can get together and have that discussion. And I'm hopeful that that's something we can do in the next month or so. He was very hopeful that this was something he could organize quickly, so I'm hoping to have more updates on that soon. Last week, I also went to the TPB meeting on Wednesday, and I have a couple of report outs from that. One is that the Community Leadership Institute is a program that is offered to residents throughout the region, and is an opportunity to learn a little more about transportation planning throughout the region. It is, it occurs over a series of evenings, three evenings in April, and applications are now available if anyone's interested. You can contact me. I put some information out in my weekly update as well. I encourage people to take a look at that. Our very own Kathy Porter actually runs the institute, so I expect it will be very good. Couple of other items from the meeting. TPB staff is planning on looking at curbside management and autonomous vehicles, and hopefully having some type of forum or symposium in the long range. It's not something that's immediately coming up, but I think that will really be an issue that we need to take a look at, and it's, I'm very, very happy to see the TPB focusing on this, and hopefully we can coordinate with them and get some more information moving forward. And then we also got an update related to the Bus Transformation Project, which is a study of bus service and the future of bus service throughout the entire region. And there were a couple of interesting tidbits I wanted to share. One thing was that they have found that buses are traveling slower today than they were about ten years ago, which seems to be largely a feature of traffic and increased traffic on the streets. But they've also found that ridership has been down about thirteen percent in the last five years, and that's something that appears to be more of a national trend and might actually be impacted by things like Uber and impacted by things like Uber and Lyft. So that's a key aspect that they're taking a look at through this study. But I was really enthused to see that one of the goals of the study is to make bus travel the mode of choice for most people in the region by 2030. And if that were to happen, I think that would really be a huge benefit to the region and would reduce many of the traffic issues we have in Tacoma Park, would allow all of us mobility throughout the region that we really need. So I'll be keeping an eye on that and provide more information as we get it. And then finally, as many people know, LED streetlight replacements have been happening in Ward Three. I just want to remind people that if you notice that there is a light shining into your house after it's been replaced, please contact me or Public Works, and we can get you on a list to have a shield added to it. At the moment, Pepco appears to be replacing or putting on the shields somewhat down the line a few months from now. And we've been pressing, I want to thank Daryl Berthwaite on her work on this, to press Pepco and ask for some of those to be put on sooner if possible, but it is still going to be very hard to do that. So I'm hoping we'll get them on sooner than later, but we're working to do that as fast as possible. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things I wanted to mention. One, I appreciate Councilmember Kostic mentioning Pepco, and we did have a useful session earlier today, and Pepco representatives presented information about the schedule going forward. And I think we'll have more details about that, as well as some other ways of improving the communication around the project. So I hope we'll have more to announce on that soon. And I just wanted to mention to my colleague, when it comes to the Eastern Avenue discussion, there's a little strip of Eastern Avenue that goes from Cedar up to Piney Branch and beyond, which is also in very bad condition. So I hope that can be part of the, be part of the discussion. The second thing is, I had mentioned that a couple of weeks ago now, there was a, sponsored by the Old Town Business Association, there was a meeting, there was a cross-jurisdictional meeting, and we had not only Washington DC Councilmember Brandon Todd, who our Councilmember Kostic just mentioned, but also some of the new ANC folks, as well as the mayor, and I believe Councilmember Dibala, and others too, maybe, I can't remember, Councilmember Searcy as well, and a lot of local business people. Out of that has emerged an idea from OTBA, where they're looking at putting together some sort of cross-border task force. It wouldn't be an official city council thing, it would be something that they would be doing, but the idea would be to explore common areas for potential collaboration relating to traffic and parking and signage and things of that nature. Potentially, we'd have to vote on something eventually if they recommended it to us or not, but I just wanted folks to know that that was something that was working its way through under the leadership of OTBA. And then lastly, yes, it's office hour time, so I'll be at Tacoma Bevco tomorrow, which is sort of like my office from 10:00 to noon, and people can stop by there as well, or you can stop by there, and then later on, stop by Spring Mill if you have to. So I hope people will stop by. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no other comments, I have a couple of updates. It was a great Saturday afternoon at Tacoma Overlook, and I'm looking forward to doing more of those types of meetings. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues, Councilwomen Dibala and Kostic, and congratulate them on going through the What's My Bias training. It's a six-week session on looking at equity, diversity, and inclusive, inclusivity issues. And I just want to thank the organizers, Annie, Jennifer, and Shawanda for bringing it together, and also that one of our staff. I didn't realize that Grace Wiggins was also part of that, so looking forward to hearing more. I spoke with Ms. Moser over the weekend and said after she got a little bit of a rest, I asked if she would come before counseling and provide a report on how things went and what she sees as potentially next step for these types of workshops. So I think that's all I have. I'll turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you very much. I have a few things and then some information on Tacoma Junction. But first, have to be so happy about the fact that the city received the Government Finance Officers Association Award of Excellence for, it's a distinguished budget presentation award. This award represents the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting and represents a significant achievement for the organization. The award is given by GFOA, reflects the commitment of the governing body, you, the council, and staff to meet the highest principles of government budgeting and presentation of budget information. This is the first time that the city has submitted its budget document for consideration. We had, you know, crossed our fingers that we would get it, but we anticipated mostly getting comments about how to continue to improve for a subsequent award. And so we're thrilled that we were able to make enough improvements in the budget presentation that it garnered this award. I wanted to particularly note that Finance Director Susan Chung and Budget Specialist Alisa Trammell worked really hard on it, have worked hard on it for several years, and congrats for a job well done.
Yes.
Yeah, I was glad. We've had a little bit of conversation about cell towers, wanted to know that, wanted to let people know that the city has engaged Attorney Mark Del Bianco to assist with the development of the administration, administrative regulations, consistent with the council's recently adopted ordinance. And for those who don't know, Mr. Del Bianco has over 25 years of experience with communications law. Over the last two years, a large part of his practice has involved advising residents and concerned nonprofit groups on small cell zoning and the rollout issues at county, state, and federal levels. And he met with staff, he'd been, you know, back and forth with us, but we had a very good meeting today, and he's moving right along. I think he's likely to get a draft to us by about March 22nd. We'll need to go through some folks, some review of that, and then there'll be discussion with the council, opportunity for public comment. It'll get noticed in the newsletter, so there's a whole series of stuff after that. But very pleased so far with that process. We have, our Montgomery College Scholarship recipients have been selected. Each year, the city provides five $1,000 scholarships to Montgomery County, Montgomery College students who meet certain criteria, including being residents in Tacoma Park. This year's recipients are Celestine Nantum, Tanjam Chowdhury, Anthony Benitez, Hana Affawork, and Jason Lovo Callejas. Hopefully I didn't mangle anyone's name. But we're very excited about them, and the last person, Jason Lovo Callejas, was recently written up in a Montgomery College student spotlight, really phenomenal. So I'm just so excited that we're able to support these students. We mentioned legislative advocacy. We do have a webpage now set up that, where we post the legislative testimony that we submit. We have it for what we've done so far this year and for a couple of years back. Over time, we'll collect our old legislative testimony so that it's all in one place available to council and public. Just advertising that there's a Thomas Edison High School Spring Open House coming up. This is an opportunity for students to get really sophisticated professional vocational education through the Thomas Edison High School. And while this is something that people know about, they often don't focus on it, it's not talked enough about. Between our new Economic Development Manager and our Rec Teen Outreach Staff, we're arranging for buses to take the students to the, to the Spring Open House. This is part of our manpower workforce development efforts in Tacoma Park. As Ms. Cook Gaines noted, we have many people in Tacoma Park that are unemployed or underemployed, and we're trying to look at how do we, over the course of time, build that workforce. And so this is one step, we have many steps to go. The bus will be on Thursday, March 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, picking up from here and from the REC Center. And so there's information in my City Manager comments. I have, in part of my City Manager comments, and they'll be posted online, quite a lot of information, kind of to walk through the Tacoma Park, Tacoma Junction development project. There's been a lot of confusion over the last two weeks. Obviously, we missed last week's council meeting, so some of the action that took place is just about two weeks ago now. And there's a number of reasons for confusion, but I'm trying to find a way to communicate in a straightforward manner, so people can kind of cut to the chase and know what the plans are and the process moving forward. So we have, I have quite a lot of information about the development plans that are on the county's website. The plans submitted by Neighborhood Development Company for the Tacoma Junction project were accepted on February 14th. The accepted primary plans are for the byright design, which is the smaller building at approximately 40,750 square feet. That plan is the size of building, represents the size of building that can be developed without additional floor area obtained through a transferable development rights process. The plans that the city council approved to move through the development review process were for a larger building of about 53,500 square feet. The city council and others did not know at the time of their approval that the TDRs would be required for a building of that size. Because the sources of any TDRs have not been identified by Neighborhood Development Company, the Montgomery County Planning Department required, almost at the last minute, that the primary plans to be reviewed by the county be the byright plans. There are two sets of plans, and people who receive plans in the mail as part of the noticing process will get both information about a preliminary plan and a site plan. The plans are related, they're moving through the development review process at the same time. The preliminary plan is the subdivision plan. It sets kind of the lock lines, it establishes types and intensities of uses, whereas the site plan is a detailed plan of the building and the facilities and how they're located on the site. In my City Manager comments, and this will be posted both on the Tacoma Junction page as well as where I normally have my City Manager comments, I have links to those two I just want to note that because of the changing requests by the Montgomery County Planning Department of NDC before the plans were accepted for review, there's some kind of strange naming and confusion about them. To see the plans for the byright-sized buildings on the county website, you go to the site plan or the preliminary plan project link and look at the plans that are labeled Submitted Don't know why they labeled it initial, because they weren't the initial ones submitted, but I think it's the initial ones to be reviewed. Plans for the alternative larger building approved by the city council are in the section labeled Submitted Support Drawings. And there's also a category of information labeled Submitted Supporting Documents that applies to the general application. So it applies to whichever version you're looking at. The schematic drawings that people received in the mail are for the byright drawings. However, the thing that's confusing about it is it just shows the footprint of the building, which is the garage. And so what you don't see on those plans is that the first level and the second level of the building are shortened at the, at the back. What I have passed out to you, and I have links on my website, are some of the pages from the byright plans. One that shows kind of the main floor schematic, and one that shows the elevation of the rear with the new byright smaller plan. So I'm just trying to, you know, there's dozens of documents, so I was trying to identify the ones that would be most useful to kind of start to get a sense of what is being proposed. I want to make a public note that the city council expect, and the staff, expected that there could be changes made to the plans, and so put in process, a process to review them. City Council Resolution 201841, lines 502 to 508 read, be it further resolved that the council will provide additional comment on any modifications made to the site plan during the Montgomery County Development Review Process that noticeably changed the building's or site's appearance, footprint, or functionality to ensure that the modified plan continues to address its goals for the revitalization of Tacoma Junction. And will include those comments in a resolution to the Montgomery County Planning Board for consideration. In my comments, I note some of the square footage differences between the plan that was approved by the council in July 2018, the plans that are the byright plans accepted by Montgomery Planning for review in this month, and note that there's a number of elements that are the same between the two plans, the facade and setback on Carroll Avenue, the lay-by for deliveries on Carroll Avenue, the public space at the front of the building on Carroll Avenue, the access to the underground parking, the green area for stormwater management, and the plans for the wooded area along Columbia Avenue are the same, or very slightly, have very slight differences. Part of the information that was submitted is the traffic study and intersection reconstruction plans. These are, these, the traffic studies that have been presented to council were presented as part of the submission, the, to realign the Tacoma Junction intersection. One of the things you may remember is that any development of any size of any property in the Tacoma Junction area cannot be approved by the county because the intersection fails their traffic counting standards. And so one, what, any, whether it's this project or any other expansion, requires a change. The state highway has to make the decision on what that intersection realignment would be. They had to submit these plans to show that it's doable, but it is not likely to be the thing that is judged. It doesn't say that the council is approving that plan. There's a whole series of steps to go related to the intersection reconstruction. And as a person mentioned this evening, state highway is starting its vision process, and people should be receiving information in the mail very soon about their process to think about how does that intersection, how may it better work and be a safer intersection? So this is an ongoing discussion. What's in the submitted plans is not likely to be the answer. It's part of the, it's part of the review process. There've been some questions about the impacts of trees on the wooded lot on Columbia Avenue. There's no change in the expectation of which trees would be impacted and potentially removed as part of the project. There's a letter requesting a variance on the tree issues, that it's part of the package. I have a link to that. The actual impact on individual trees depends on what comes out of the county's and the city's reviews of the site plan. In particular, the impact will depend on the specific part of the wooded lot that will be impacted by the rear building line and the stormwater facilities. And for that, we have to wait and hear a little bit more from the Development Review Committee to see if there's some changes in where that line goes. In addition, much of the site is fill, and the fill that is found needs to be removed during construction. Once construction is completed, in addition to the trees that are retained on the site, there will be new trees planted. The site itself will have better soil, will not have the uncontrolled stormwater situation from the parking lot that currently exists, and therefore will have healthier wooded area, which will then be placed under a permanent forest conservation easement. Again, citing City Council Resolution 201841, it addresses trees in lines 487 to 490. It states that the city will develop a process in which the Tree Commission will provide insight and recommendations for the project as part of the development review process. And I have a bit of a recommendation for that process. That recommendation is going to be discussed with the Tree Commission at the March meeting to see if it's the process that they're kind of agreeable to following. So I have a bit of a schedule of next steps, because I think this starts to, there's so many moving parts. March 19th is the Development Review Committee meeting. March 20th would be the presentation by NDC to the city council on the byright plan and any comments that are made at the DRC meeting. It's possible in April, there might be a city council discussion once the DRC issues a written report, particularly if there's new information that's included there. My proposal is to have NDC have a discussion with the Tree Commission about the tree plans and processes at the and processes at their April meeting. And then, a proposal to have a work session and a voting session and perhaps more sessions in May with the city council regarding the Tacoma Junction project and the recommendation that you may want to make to the planning board. Within the guidelines of how the development review process works, in general, you should have planning board action within 120 days of acceptance of a proposal, of an application, which takes that till mid-June. With this timeline, recommendations from the city council for the planning board could easily be met by that time. Nevertheless, an extension could be arranged because the planning board and the council will work closely together. The planning board's going to want to know the position of the city council regarding this proposal. They've done that in the past, there's no indication that there wouldn't be a scheduling courtesy as we go forward. I have details about what happens with the March 19th Development Review Committee meeting. That meeting would be at the MNC PPC offices at 8787 Georgia Avenue. They normally begin at 9:30 in the morning. They cover a number of topics, a number of applications, so we don't know the agenda yet and when this item would be heard. The meetings are open to the public, but the public does not have an opportunity to comment at that, at that technical meeting. After the meeting, the DRC compiles its findings and recommendations into a written report and makes that recommendation to the planning board. As I noted before, once the report is finalized, it will be shared with the city council, which could decide to discuss the findings in advance of the council's scheduled May meetings. I will say that having participated in Development Review Committee meetings a long time ago, you hear almost everything during those meetings. So, it's not likely that there would be some new information after the fact in the, in the written comments unless they're waiting for some new information and some surprise comes out of that. Then, there would be a March 20th presentation to the city council on the by right plans that were considered by the DRC. Not only they, but city staff will identify significant comments that were made at the DRC hearing, at the DRC meeting. For, I've got mention of the April nights tree commission. Again, we will be talking with the tree commission to make sure that this is a good process for them, and I've talked to both the city attorney and folks in the public works just about how that might move forward in a smooth way. The recommendations that would come out of, out of that discussion and comments would come to me. I have the final authority over trees on city property, but it would also come to the city council, and it may very well be something that you reference in your resolution on the site plan. So, that's what we would anticipate having that information for. In May, the proposal is that the council would consider a resolution regarding the Tacoma Junction project with a work session and consideration of a resolution on May 15th. The outcome would either be a resolution to the planning board, which expresses support or support with conditions of the project, or it would be a resolution ending the project because you always have that opportunity. A city council resolution to the planning board on a development project has great weight. If the planning board would wish to act against the position of the city council, it would require a super majority vote, which is at least four of the five members. Where this would be someplace that you may, it may come into play, is if there is a condition you wish to put on the plans that the planning board doesn't like. So, you know, and I don't know what that might be, but that's, you know, if you don't like the plans, you're not going to have them even go forward to the planning board. So, this would be the place where there may be a discussion over, over a condition. There's a number of other actions that are, that will be going on, so this is the outline of the, that's part of the development review process. There's also the Historic Preservation Commission. There's our tree process at the end of the process. There are stormwater finalized plan at the end of the process. There's the discussions related to the consolidation of the multiple lots involved, which will be coming before the council for discussion at some point. And there's also the issues and discussions about construction staging, parking, and other impacts on businesses and neighborhoods in the Tacoma Junction area. Most of the conversations regarding construction impacts would take place after the May discussions by council, partly because we need to know more information before we get there, partly because we're all going to be doing budget in April. There's only so many hours that we can possibly have some of these discussions. There are some informal things going on, you know, as we speak, working with the businesses, but in terms of something that's very systematic about this, that would wait until the summer. So, it's a lot of information. There's links to the various key parts. There's obviously a lot more information on the website in general about the project, but given the kinds of questions and confusion about the steps, I really just wanted to lay it out in one place so people could look there for that.
Okay. And just as a reminder, that will be up in two places, on the website, on the Tacoma Junction page, and also where we put the city manager's.
Right.
And that would be, my first question is, would you be getting that up tomorrow morning? Tomorrow afternoon, Friday?
Maybe.
It's, it may be up tonight.
Okay, thank you.
It would be soon. Certainly by tomorrow morning if it's not tonight.
Thank you very much for that update. Seeing as it's getting kind of late, I think our first work session item is an update from the youth council and a discussion of the revisions to the youth council.
Mayor, could I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay. Thanks for the presentation. So, two, two questions. On the state highway question, can you clarify that a little bit more? Because in particular with the vision, not vision quest, vision process moving through, the council, obviously, and the community haven't settled on a particular option. So, the material includes, in effect, a recommended option, right? So, how, can we just clarify that we haven't done that?
Yes, we've not done that, obviously. So, there's a couple of things. The first is, and I skipped over this because I didn't want to take a lot of time, but I do want to make it clear that the Development Review Committee may very well think that everything in the plan as, as to the actual project meets their criteria, but it could fail because the intersection fails, because of the traffic counties' rules on traffic studies. So, they may make a recommendation for denial to the planning board of the project because of the failing traffic intersection. The planning board has the authority to override that as they see fit. The area that they would look to, from what we've been told, is the extent to which there is a solid plan and funding for revisions to the intersection. So, part of this is going to be on, kind of back and forth between how the state highway's discussion goes. My understanding for that vision study is that they would be talking and having a June Charette-ish kind of thing through the summer, have recommendations to the state highway administrator in the fall with a recommendation of the, and identification of funds that would take to implement whatever the recommendation is. So, it may be that things get stretched out until that discussion takes place with the state highway and they make a determination. Even if NDC had buckets of money to redo the intersection with its own cash, it would still require the approval of state highway.
So, that all makes sense as far as it goes. My question is, if the planning, when the planning staff is reviewing this proposal, and there's a lengthy document there on the traffic study.
Right.
And there's a preferred or recommended or, you know, best of the group choice, how does the planning staff know that we haven't actually selected that? That's, that's what I'm getting at. We haven't done that process. State highway hasn't done it, but we certainly, you know, we.
That's a good question. I'll make sure that that's conveyed. We will certainly make that very clear.
It's in the resolution.
Yeah, it's in, it's actually.
It's there, but it's also even, I will make sure that also as part of the discussion with the DRC, it's clear. And when you get down to writing your planning board resolution, resolution for the planning board, you can be very specific about it as well.
Right, but I think we need that, we need that going in because I don't want them to be assuming.
I will say that nobody assumes that we're supportive of that particular, that we've taken a position on that particular.
That we'll actively make it, make it clear.
We will actively make it clear.
And so, the only other thing is, and I know, Mayor, you want to get to other, you want to get to the rest of the agenda, which of course we should, but we're, there's some discussion of enhanced communication protocols, and I think we definitely need that.
Yes.
I just don't think that is enough of a way to get everything we want in terms of what NDC has proposed. And so, I, I know there's not a lot of time between now and when the DRC is meeting, and I don't think that we have to vote before the DRC, but I would like to find a way to have more from NDC than just what we're going to get from conference calls.
I think I'm going to have to talk to you offline and learn a little bit more, and maybe we can figure out.
Are you requesting something, Councilwoman Kovar?
I'm, I'm musing on the options.
So, I think one of the things, we have a weekly phone call that we could.
Yeah, that was my, one of my questions.
Right, that has been established. Thank you, Councilwoman Kostick for pushing that. We talked about having clarifying questions. I know you already put one clarifying question in that will be asked on each of those phone calls. Notes from those phone calls will be made. Each of the parties will be reviewed, and then the notes will be put up on the website.
Right, we want to make sure that everybody who's, you know, participates in this is agreeable, that the information that's being conveyed is what was, what was understood. So, part of this is to not have any, have any mixed messages.
And given how close March 19th is, next week is March 6th. In addition, I apologize to the city manager if you mentioned this in your lengthy update on Tacoma Junction, but another thing is that we've put in a request to Gwen Wright at the planning department for clarification on a number of things. And I spoke with her yesterday, and she's looking into.
She's coming, potentially coming.
Yeah, I spoke to her Tuesday, what is today, Wednesday? I spoke to her yesterday, and she's received our, my letter I wrote to her on Friday and looking into a number of things.
I guess the only other thing I would say is, in your document, you had, here are the things that have stayed the same, and here are the things that are different. And maybe there's other things that are different. It'd be good to get a written statement from NDC saying, here are all the things that are different, because I don't think we know that.
Right, well, yes. And, but the other part of this, and this is just staff capacity, is that I want city staff, who are experts in their various areas, to have the time to really scrubly, scrub and review the plans, because to me, I would rather have that objective information come to you. Yes, we can have NDC highlight what changes there are, but I want the eyes of, of my engineer and arborist and planner and other folks to look through all of the details of these plans so that they can provide that information to you, and they have a very short period of time to do that. They're gathering it for the DRC meeting, and they're gathering it for you, and, and, you know, they simply have hardly had time to close the door and really look at plans. And, and that, I think, is a critical piece because we can't get that information to you without it.
Ms. Manley, no, this is not time for public comments, I'm sorry. This is, this was an update, and we're moving on. We have our youth council here, who has school tomorrow morning, and we will continue these conversations. I'm going to leave the last word to Councilwoman Kostick.
I was just going to ask if the city manager could share some information about our improved, our goal to have improved communications with NDC, because that's something that, for me, has been extremely frustrating. And I, we had a great discussion with Pepco earlier tonight about how surprises happen, unexpected things happen, but they need to be communicated, and we need to know them. And so, I was wondering if you could speak a little bit about what we can do moving forward to make sure that that happens.
So, part of this, and again, because lack of staff time, I didn't have time to write that up, part of my communication effort here. So, NDC also recognizes the frustration, and they're frustrated as well. So, the idea of having a weekly conference call that has a couple of folks from NDC, just a couple of staff, a council member, more than one, that's something that you guys can decide on, on how that functions, to have, be participating in that conference call. This is not a conference call to say, hey, wouldn't you like to change the building so it does this? It's what's the process, what new information is being found, what's, what are the differences? What did this change by right plan mean in terms of rents or other kinds of things that, that have, are legitimate questions that have come up before, between, before the council from the previous information that was provided from NDC now that there's a revised plan? What do those things mean? How do we share that information? Similarly, if there's just technical questions about square footage, or this kind of treatment or whatever that can be submitted to our staff, they will get those answers in a, in a question and answer form so that we have that posted. We'll go through it often and just make sure that it's correct on that, those weekly calls. But again, this is a way to get that technical information from you posted. If you've got questions and you're not on the call, if you get them to us by, say, Wednesday, and we can figure out more specifically by when, we can have that as part of the agenda so that item is specifically asked and answered. That also gives time if there's some research that needs to be done before that conference call, that it can be done. So, there's that. It's also, you know, we're continuing to try to, to post information as we start hearing back from the components of the DRC stuff. That stuff will get posted as well. My guess is that we're not going to hear anything before March 19th, before that meeting, other than internally from our review of these things that we can share. But the, you know, we will get, learn a lot in the DRC meeting, and that information will come to you and discuss on, on March 20th. One of the things that I think is, is really critical is that in those conference calls, that everybody agreed that they heard this information and whatever. Part of the problem that I think has happened is that a person kind of one-offs a conversation with somebody else, and it goes back and forth, and we've had really mixed messages. And, you know, we can only be on so many different, different calls. So, I think focusing this so that it's a very, that, that it's a trusted document that comes out of that weekly call, I think will be useful. That's the best I can say about it, and we'll have to see how that works.
All right.
Do we know when the first call is scheduled?
This Friday.
It's Friday, okay. And I, I would hope that more than one council member is on that call, and I would recommend if Councilmember Kovar would be willing.
So, I, I think you need to figure out up to three who it is. But I don't know that this is the time necessarily, but I'd be happy to.
Right, I know Councilwoman Kostick has volunteered to do that, and we can discuss. I think the staff just sent around the time later, late this afternoon. So, if there are other members of the city council who would like to be on that, we can just send an email around, and we, since it's weekly, we can also rotate. So, it's same, similarly how we did the mediation for the co-op, we can handle it in the same vein. All right. We're going to move on now to our youth council.
May I ask a point of information, Madam Mayor?
You could probably send that in an email, it's nine o'clock, if we could move on. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kieran, I'm the chairperson of the youth council. And tonight, we'll be doing a couple of things. The first thing is, we will just go over briefly some proposed changes to our charter. So, the copy that you actually have, we are working off of our original version, so it actually has the changes from nine to 11 members and the focusing on wards four, five, and six that you have already approved, so you can just ignore that in the first part of Section B. The other things, we have a few small changes that we made. So, throughout, we simply changed the word leader to chairperson because it's just clearer. And we also just redefined quorum in Section E, Part Three, again, to make it clear. Some of our larger changes that we made, we established the election of the chairperson and vice chairperson in Section B, Part Two. That was not clear earlier, and we wanted to make sure that it was clear how those two members would be chosen. Next, in Section B, Part Five, Part B of that, we changed our attendance policy to make it a bit more broader and up to the discretion of the council members. and up to the discretion of the council members, because we felt like we would be able to tell when somebody was clearly not engaged, and we thought that would just make for smoother runnings of meetings in the future. We also, in C and D, section C and D, we just clarified a couple of things for our new appointment and application dates, just the switch from September to July and all that. Some of that was also already approved, so. And then we, in part F, you see number three is crossed out. We just got rid of having a recorder, because that is on a rotating basis for our meetings. And then we also established the presence of a vice-chairperson, that's number five in section F, because we have one. Yeah, so yeah, so those are all the changes. Are there any questions?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. So the, our city clerk, Jessie Carpenter, who is at a conference this week, had a couple of suggestions. I don't know if they were, were they forwarded to you?
No, they were not.
Okay, so I will read them to you and see if they were, do you need some? If, see if they were, they are amenable to, to all of you. So I told her I would read them to you. Under B, number two, the, the change, she suggests that it actually be changed to, "The youth council shall report to the city council the name of the elected chairperson and vice-chairperson." Instead of us verifying, just, you all just tell us who they are.
That sounds good.
Okay, so we'll do that change. The other is under the appointment process. Number two, change that to be, "Applications will be completed and submitted to the city clerk no," oh, that's the same one, "no later than July thirtieth." Okay, that's the same. Number three, "The city council will review applications and select members to be included in appointment," that's the same one, too. All right. Oh, this was a question. "Should we move the application date to a date in June so that the council can make an appointment at a meeting in July? Since that may help students plan their fall activity scheduling, knowing that time is needed to attend youth council meetings."
And, and also because you're not here in August.
Right, and we're not here in August.
I think that is, yeah, that's something, yeah, that makes sense.
Awesome. All right, so we will do that. I did not have any other questions on this. Councilwoman Kostick.
I just have a question about the meeting minutes, since it came up here. If it would be possible for you to send those to us, or to ask Jessie to send those to us, I think it would be great to just get meeting minutes from all of the committees, and I'd love to see regularly and be reminded of what you guys are doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, the process has not been as smooth, since there was a change from media specialist. So that is something, they are shared with the Jessie and Irma, but we're, we will do our best to make sure that they're all spread, and so that you all have access to them.
And thank you so much for all of your work.
And, and I believe that we have to check, all of our committee, minutes to our committee meetings are posted on the website, but we should double check.
They are. I actually looked beforehand, and I didn't see them for the youth council, so I don't, I don't know. Maybe, I mean, I don't know if I missed something, but I didn't, they didn't jump out.
Yeah, awesome. All right, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you for doing this. One question, do you think that you should define in F what the, the vice-chairperson's duties are if the chairperson isn't available at the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can just add along the lines, "To assist the chairperson in all matters pertaining to the youth council", and step into the chairperson's role in the case that the chairperson is not available.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, did our city clerk get that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Terrific, all right.
All right, perfect.
Was there anything else? I think there was something else this evening, you had another report, right?
I'll turn it over to Elliot.
Thank you.
Hi, so on the topic of this, this is actually, might be more applicable to a later work session, but I know it was placed in this one, since it pertains to the youth council, and I know we're, it's starting to perhaps get a little late.
Yeah.
So it has come to the attention of the Tacoma Park Youth Council that, that there are discussions surrounding minimum age requirements for committees and board memberships in the city. And so we would like to share our stance on the issue as a council, and as youth who are actively involved with the city and community. It is the belief for the, of the youth council that young people who are passionate about specific issues in the city must be given a fair chance to serve in the roles that they want and to be involved. This is why the Tacoma Park Youth Council proposes setting the minimum age requirement for committees and commissions, who are in advisory role to the council, to twelve years old, which is the age of the youngest members of the youth council. For boards and commissions that hold additional responsibilities, along with their advisory role to the council, we suggest a minimum age of sixteen years, as any Tacoma Park voter who is qualified and has interests should be allowed to serve our community in the same capacity as any older member. We know the city values the drive and passion of its youth, and so we encourage the council to take our recommendation into account when making decisions on this issue and the future. So this is the official youth council stance. If you have any questions on this, feel free to let us know, we might be able to answer some now, but.
Councilmembers, is that, is that all right?
Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Kostick.
I just want to say thank you, and, and I, I agree that, that young people should be given a chance to be on, on the committees, and that we would really benefit from hearing from young people, including down to age twelve. I'm, I'm curious about why you chose age twelve, was it because you, you have experience with that on the youth council, and you feel like that's working well, or was there, was there more of a thought process?
Yes, well, I think that that was a major reason. The youngest members of our youth council right now are in seventh grade and twelve years old. And back when the youth council was being formed, and we were drafting the original charter, we discussed twelve as a minimum age for the youth council, because at twelve years old and in seventh grade, you're not just beginning that transition into middle school, and you'll have had opportunities to find leadership positions within school and within the community around that age, especially since, since part of the drafting of the original youth council charter was up to Mr. Garing, the leader of Difference Makers. Often, the, the younger Difference Makers officers are twelve, twelve years old and in seventh grade. And I remember, you know, back from when we were that age, and I was in Difference Makers, that that was an effective age for leaders to sort of start understanding the roles and responsibilities of leadership. And I think that we've found that the youngest members of the youth council are just as valuable as any of the older members. So we're, we strongly encourage that, that be the suggested minimum age.
Great, I'm very supportive of that myself. There was a member, or there was a resident who applied to one of the committees, who was twelve, who wasn't appointed earlier this year, who I would like to see appointed. I'm just curious, in terms of our timing, is that a discussion that we will get back to as we're discussing, discussing committees? And what, if you can remind me what the timing, sort of, do we not have time on it?
It depends on how we do our priorities. If the reconfiguration of committees stays on our priority list, that means we'll move it forward. If the council decides it is not one of our top priorities, then we have to reevaluate the amount of time we spend on it. So I think that's, yeah, but at a minimum, we can, we can, we were, we made a preliminary decision a few months ago, and so now we can take this into consideration.
And might I add, one last thing. If any of you on the council have reservations about the minimum age requirements that we're suggesting here, I believe the youth council encourages you to reach out to us with any further questions, and if you want to sit in on a session of one of our youth council meetings, to see youth in action on one of our city committees, we think it might be beneficial in easing any reservations you might hold towards having younger members of the city committed, so, or on committees. Appointed, appointed is the word I was looking for.
Elliot, can you, can you also, can the council send us?
Yes.
Because I, I think part of the issue is also communicating that with members of our standing committees now. Because in the situation that Councilwoman Kostick is citing, the committee that was looking at it actually had requested that, that we set a higher minimum age. So I think there's also some conversation to have with committee members, because we also want to make sure that if we do start appointing young people at the age of twelve, they're also welcome on the committees. And so I think it is a process that we want to go through.
We will send along or stick back in the next few days.
I, I think my, my question kind of piggybacks off of that point. So, thank you so much, and appreciate the recommendations. Have you had an opportunity to kind of take a look at some of the descriptions of the various committees, with an eye for which committees might be suited, or better suited, for, for youth that are twelve years old or older? One thing that immediately comes to mind, even if we were able to just allow the youth council to maybe shadow some of the standing committees, to just kind of get a feel for what are some of the things that are covered, and to come back with a recommendation in terms of, yeah, this committee, no, this committee, yes. That would be really helpful as well, and I don't know if that's something that you all have done already, or is something that you may be considering. Just to kind of check out what some of the other committees are doing, to get a feel for the topics that would be covered.
We have met with some members of other committees in the past, and so some of the ones that we were discussing that we feel might benefit from having younger members of our community, the Committee on the Environment, the Recreation Committee, we've met with the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and we are one hundred percent open to meeting with members of other city committees. Are there any that I'm missing off the top of my head? Yeah, and so, yes, we, we're very open to meeting with other members, members of other city committees, because we feel like communication is one of the most important things that we need to do as committees. So we're, we're hopeful to begin talking. In terms of the ones that were, we've discussed, in terms of which ones we might recommend, the sixteen-year-old minimum voting age, the Board of Elections was the one that came up most often. And, oh, I remember the one that we, that, for the twelve-year-old, Safe Roadways. I know we've had youth on that committee in the past with, and so, yeah, so the, the big one that we discussed with, for the sixteen-year-old minimum was the Board of Elections. And, and there is a young person who is, I believe, still under eighteen, who, but who was appointed at sixteen to the Board of Elections, and currently serves. And, yes, and we, but we're not an expert on all of the inner workings of all of the city committees yet. We'd love, we'd love to learn more, but, so I think part of the statement we made was intentionally allowing some discretion to, to the council in interpreting which committees might be more appropriate for the twelve-year-old versus sixteen-year-old minimum age.
Great, no, thank you so much, that's really helpful.
Great, thank you so much, and you'll get home before nine thirty, hopefully. Thank you for coming, and George, I guess we'll see you at National League of Cities? All right, all right.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right, we'll move next to our next item, which is council priorities, and approach to budgeting for FY twenty twenty. Just as background, the city council met twice in, in January, two evenings, January twenty-fourth and February fifth, as we've done for the last couple of years. We reflected on the priorities established the previous year, and made progress, talked about the progress we made. This year, thanks to Councilmember Smith, we had two facilitators who are, helped us walk through our council priorities with an eye towards the racial equity work we do. And so I think that was very beneficial to all of us as we continue working on racial equity. This evening, our goals for this evening is, one, to review and finalize, or at least get closer to finalizing, language and changers in the priority document, so we'll be walking through that in a moment. I think all of the changes members of the council should have seen, and some of them are new since this was, this document was posted on the city website. We'll revisit the top five priorities that we have identified as our, I guess, our top, top priorities? Our priority priorities. And then we'll turn to a discussion of budget. So up on the screen, you'll see the, the first, let me just grab it. Good night, Mr. Lovis. Does everybody have in front of them their priorities? Yes, all right, so the way we're gonna do this, because I think most of us have seen this, is just go page by page. And if you're, we'll just, if you're okay with the priorities, we'll just keep moving on, and, or the language changes. If there's something you want to see different, or that we need to actually make a formal decision on, we will do that. So on the first page, there are a number of changes, much, most of them are not greatly substantive, but clarifying points. Anyone have any changes or additions to that? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the second page. On this page, we actually will pause for a moment, because we do have something that we should take a more formal hand vote on at this moment, which is the addition of the Vision Zero Initiative to the priorities. As you will read, under the goal, "We have improved transportation planning and outreach to create a safer, more racially equitable community for all residents, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and vehicle occupants." "The strategy is explore adopting a Vision Zero Initiative, begin to examine potential components such as education, outreach, policy changes, and infrastructure improvements, and the desired outcome is improved traffic safety resulting in eliminating serious vehicle, pedestrian, and bike collisions, improved comprehensive transportation planning throughout the city with a data-driven approach that takes into consideration impacts throughout the city, racially equitable transportation systems and outcomes." Yeah. So we've all, we've seen this language before, it's, it's slightly different, but for the most part, it is something that came up in our priorities meeting. Are there any questions regarding the Vision Zero goal? Okay, seeing no questions, I like to see a raise of hands of who would like to include, formally include this in our, yeah.
Can I just, I do have a clarifying question. So on this, we're saying, we're exploring adopting that. So we're not literally saying we're adopting it, or I just want to?
I, I want to clarify a little bit, too, because we did change the goal here, which I think is important to note. And the goal itself is not to adopt, or even explore adopting a Vision Zero policy, but to improve our transportation planning and outreach, which may take a variety of different forms. And then our strategy is to explore adopting a Vision Zero initiative, which I think has a lot of value, and I would like to see. But, you know, that will be an exploration process, and what's involved in that will be a process. But the overall goal would be to focus on improvements to transportation, and coordination of transportation planning.
I'm good with it as is.
Councilwoman Susan?
That won me over. No, the, I mean, with things like the Purple Line, and, and there's a number of different transportation, rapid bus transit, there's a lot of stuff that's happening in the area. So making sure that we have a priority that's devoted to trying to improve transportation planning for the city as a whole, I think is important, and I could see.
All right, all those in favor?
I had a comment.
Yeah.
So my comment generally is not about this. My comment reflects what, one of, somebody who commented earlier tonight. This is a lot, and we're adding one, and I don't object to this particular one, but I, I, I really want to hang on to the super priorities, and the notion of how are we going to target. I also want to put out, not for tonight, but just to, I really would like to talk about what we're not going to do, or what we're going to do less of. So, having put that out there.
And now you're going to raise your hand and vote for adding this? Just asking.
To be clear, this was only a half a priority, so it doesn't really count to the total, right?
Mr. Davis, a half of, all right, all those in favor of including it in the document moving forward, raise your hand. All right, everyone but Councilwoman DeBala, so. All right, there, anything else on page two? Yes, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to call attention to the discussion of the city committees, and the racial equity training that we plan to do for that in the priority, that I think addresses one of the questions that we had at the public comment session today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to page three. I think these are all things that we have discussed or taken into consideration prior. Any questions, or, all right, seeing none, I'm going to keep going. Page four, on the environmental sustainability, these are all things that we've actually talked about. with our Committee on the Environment during our Green Team meetings. On five. Four or five, oh, well, alright, the next page then, sorry, mine is, got printed weird. And the only change I would make on the environmentally sustainable community one in our final document, I'd take out straws and declaring a climate emergency, just because I think those will either be done or close to done by the time we actually adopt this document. Okay, alright, then we'll take a look. Alright, now I'm on engaged, responsive, service-oriented government. Again, I think, I don't, my pages are messed up, because I printed mine at home, so, sorry.
Yeah, page seven, except for the mayor.
Except for me, alright. Page seven. Page eight. Are we on community development for an improved and equitable quality of life now? And I just asked the deputy city manager, you highlighted with assistance from outside consultant, was there-
Yes, I, I explained in an email why I highlighted that uh, this language was inserted um, at the suggestion of Councilmember Kobar. And I just wanted to point out that even if that is something that we opt to do, which could be the, the right thing to do, I'm not sure that you want to specifically state that in this document, based on conversations I've had um, with folks who have engaged um, public engagement consultants to assist them with similar processes that have gone um, you know, up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for that sort of assistance. So, I think, you know, we, even if we do use an outside consultant, um, even if that is the route that we wanna go, I think the language here, even without explicitly stating that, gives you that flexibility.
Well, so you're saying, I'm sorry if I didn't quite get what you're, you're suggesting not having the language, or?
I, I'm, I'm suggesting that you, it would afford, you would afford yourselves more flexibility if you didn't have that language, and you could still do that.
Well, it's an important thing, and I, if that's what people want, that's fine. The only alternative I'd suggest would be potentially with assistance from an outside consultant. Just so that we know it's a thing, we, we, we wanna make sure we really do think about it.
Sure, I think that, that actually meets the same objective.
Yeah, I mean, you know, in my mind, you know, we could say the potentially. I, I agree with um, making sure that if we're going to, I would actually err on the side of cutting it, because I think it gets into the how. The strategy is to improve community engagement around the recreational needs, and we could do that in a plethora of ways, depending on how our budget, um, how our budget conversations go. I personally want to make sure that we can bring someone in from the outside. But that's one of many ways in which we could accomplish the goal of increasing community engagement. So, I'm fine with leaving the strategy, increased community engagement around the recreational needs, and not necessarily having to specify in this document how we're going to do it.
Alright, so we'll take it out, and then everything else is-
I also have a question, I'm just not entirely clear what the next part means. Establish the site infrastructure, oh, now it just moved. Establish the site infrastructure needed to facilitate the city's ownership and design of the future recreation center. Is this to identify the, what infrastructure we need? Or, I, I'm just not, I'm sorry, I'm just not entirely clear what, what it's me-
Yeah, so, in my mind, in order to get us to the point where we actually are ready for a shovel-ready recreation project, we need three things. Clear understanding of what it is we want this project or this site to be, housing, rec center, what do we want? Um, and that's the first part. The second piece is we wanna make sure that we're engaging the community, and we're bringing them along for the ride. And so that we can make sure that whatever we ultimately put there is what people want, that's the second piece. And then the third piece is there are a number of infrastructural challenges with the site itself. We've, we have to, we're still doing it, um, but we need to get ownership of the site from Montgomery County. There are things in terms of like, the green space next to the rec actually belongs to the condo community, there's the easement stuff, there's the fact it's on a weird hill, there's a lot of like, site-specific issues that we need to um, try to facilitate the city's ownership of the space that would be necessary to achieve the vision that we've developed, and actually house the things that we want, the community has communicated that they want it. Um, and that might require a separate stream of work or tasks for, for city staff. That's different from, let's have a, the city council meeting around what our goals are, and bring the rec committee in to talk about what they would like, if that makes sense.
That makes sense to me.
But a lot of the work has been done already, um, for that third piece.
I think the phrase is kind of confusing though, to say site infrastructure. I don't know if maybe there's another phrase that, that, that kind of gets to what you just were describing.
We can just take out, maybe just take out infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Say site, establish the site, or it's, no, the, that doesn't work.
Physical arrangements? We don't need to do this right now, we can kind of put something-
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look, this, it's really more about ensuring the infrastructure, or ensuring the site, um, the availability of the site, such that-
So, it would just be facilitate the city's ownership and um-
And design.
And design of the, of the site for the future recreation center.
Yeah, so it'd basically be any work that we would need to do in order to acquire the site, and make sure that we understand what the site's capacity is, such that we move forward with actually creating something.
I just wanna clarify something, the, the ones that are starred are the super priorities?
Correct, yes, there are five that have asterisks next to them, and when we finalize the document, I'll probably move those up to the top of each thematic area.
Yeah, the super delegates. Alright, so that, the language is done, and I wanna take just a few minutes. I had talked to each of my colleagues about this, and um, it gets to a how, that Councilwoman uh, Siri was just talking about, that isn't in this document, but something I'd like for um, the city council and staff to explore over the next um, couple of months, which is uh, looking at taking one of our priorities, particularly one of our housing uh, priorities, which is to ensure we have a range of safe, quality, and stable housing options that are affordable for residents of varying incomes and all races and ethnicity, ethnicities, and focus on um, looking at renters in our community, um, and looking at programs um, particularly geared towards um, renters. This is one of our um, priorities that we've talked about. And in order to um, also look at one of our priorities, which is engaging members of the public, particularly those who have traditionally faced barriers in engaging with the community, is look into uh, participatory budgeting. It's um, I, we have a blog that can go up on the city website to describe this more, because I don't think this is the place or the hour to get into it. But I just wanted to raise this, um, we talked about it a little bit in our priority meetings, and if it's okay with my colleagues to say that we will, um, you know, just explore this as a potential how. We look into um, implementing one of our uh, goals on housing issues. And again, this is looking at participatory budgeting, which in a nutshell is a process in which community members decide how to spend part of a public budget, and it gives people the real power over um, part of our city budget. And it would engage uh, part of our community, specifically renters. And so, if um, just, if folks are okay with us just putting that as something that we will look at in the future, and then we can put out more information to the public, so that um, we can continue having these conversations.
Were you proposing to put that in here as a phrase somewhere?
No, because it is a how. I am following the lead of my uh, wonderful colleague, who is keeping our um, priorities documented on goals and strategy, and the idea of how we're implementing things are conversations that will come um, with city staff. But it is uh, an idea that I know um, was discussed at the um, What's My Bias um, workshop um, over the weekend, and I also know that uh, the Tacoma Foundation is also looking into potentially using participatory budgeting for some of their funds. And so, I thought, since there's conversations happening about it, this would be a good time to provide information to the public about what does participatory budgeting actually mean? And so, we'll have a blog that goes up on the city website soon to, and then we can schedule time to discuss it more. Great, thank you for considering that. Alright, now let's move on to our super priorities. We identified in our um, two uh, priority evenings, uh, ensuring we have a range of safe, quality, and stable housing options that are affordable for residents of varying incomes and all races and ethnicities, planning and preparing for development in the city and region while maintaining the special character and diversity of Tacoma Park, prioritizing actions, policy, innovations, and new opportunities that mitigate and adapt to the causes and effects of climate change. Then we have improve and formulate systems for council-appointed committees. And I will just put, as Councilmember um, Siemens pointed out, that the, the sub there is really to think about our committees. How do we um, engage residents, uh, again, who have uh, faced historical barriers to being more engaged uh, committees, and really thinking about how a new approach to our residents committees? And the final thing is improving policies and processes, particularly those related to the tree ordinance and traffic, to make them more equitable and easy to understand and follow. So, those were the um, five priorities that we, super priorities that we identified. If we wanna take just a few minutes to discuss whether or not um, people wanna keep those five priorities, if anyone wants to um, say one of them should be left off, I ask that we don't add any unless you're gonna suggest taking one off.
Mention one thing if I could? It sort of strikes me, I, I think they're all good priorities. It sort of strikes me that the one about committees is really important, but less, it, it doesn't seem like it would involve the level of sustained work over the course of the entire year and beyond, the way some of the other four do. So, I don't know whether that should come into play, it's, it's a vitally important thing, but it seems less, it seems like that could all be completed, I wanna say relatively quickly, within the context of how things go in Tacoma Park, whereas the other four, w- we know we're not even gonna complete them this year, we're just gonna make a ton of progress on them this year. So, that's, I, I don't know where that ends up, meaning whether that's-
Maybe just to take a moment and expand on some of the ideas, and, and Councilwoman Kostick and I had started working on this last year until um, personal events and other things kind of overtook us all, um, and me personally. So, we, we do actually have um, a draft of a survey that we started to um, send out to each of our um, committee members. And also, not even just current committee members, but former members as well. And I actually think, depending on when we send it out, asking them about age of um, participation would be actually another um, interesting um, thing to add. The other thing we looked at is, are there ways to actually um, think about how we uh, structure committees differently? In particular, uh, thinking about, right now, um, actually as Mr. Kelly said, regarding all of us, and who has the privilege to serve our community and run for um, elections. So, two, it's the same as who has um, the ability to serve on a committee. We don't offer childcare right now, um, people are not, do not receive stipends. For example, I believe in the city of College Park, when people serve on committees, they actually do receive stipends. And so, we'd be looking into um, wh- what, what are some innovative things that we can do to actually get more people involved with it? So, I actually, I don't think it's a, if it was just a survey and then kind of saying like, okay, let's do this, this, and this, I agree with you, it'd just be a couple of months. But um, I think, when I think about doing this, it's really thinking about putting in place and maybe piloting some innovative um, things that would actually uh, really disrupt how you think about the structure of um, committees.
That's good.
Alright, so, seeing uh, no changes, or Councilwoman Susan, I can see your hand.
I was like, do I wanna say anything after nine thirty, I don't know, um. So, the struggle is serious, right? Because there's a lot of stuff that we, we want to be able to do, and there's a limited number of resources that we have to do them. I think that all of our super priorities are super, but I'm still concerned that the number of supers that we have um, may be um, still too much given um, current staff capacity. I've started to think about some of the priorities in terms of, what are, what are the priorities that could have long-term lasting substantial impact that may actually trickle into other priorities? So, when we're talking about housing strategy, when we're talking about economic development, and how can we try to tackle some of these challenges? In my mind, coming up with ways to address these issues could impact sustain, the, the environment, right? We, we get to a point where when we're talking about economic development, or we're talking about the whole point of new housing construction, that we try to encourage green construction, that, you know, so I could kind of see how focusing on certain priorities may actually open doors to make progress in some of the others. And so, in thinking about it that way, um, if I had to just narrow it down to where I would wanna focus over the next year, it would be housing and development. I, I just, I think that if we're just being realistic, um, the junction is going to take a lot of effort. If we're really thinking strategically about um, where um, the state is moving in terms of opportunity zone designation, the fact that we only have ten years, I, I think there are things that may be happening that might happen fast. You, you're talking about that few years, Purple Line, there's a lot that's going to happen in the next few years. And I, I do think it's gonna require a lot of staff attention in order to effectively address what lies ahead in terms of in, increasing housing, addressing some housing constraints that we have, and dealing with the economic development um, aspects that are, that are facing the city. So, that's where I would prioritize amongst the list of priorities and the five super priorities. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just very brief, very briefly, I, I see very clearly the, the interaction between housing, economic development, and climate change issues, makes a lot of sense to me. I like the, I like the priorities the way they are, and if I was gonna bump one, well, I might bump committees, but I'm fine with it the way it is. And if I could just, uh, say, I think one of the things that hasn't been talked a lot about, although it's referenced a little bit in, in some of the sustainability things, um, really has to do with flooding. And that is absolutely a housing livability issue. And I'm, the more that I have been thinking about where the influ, where the, I feel that the force needs to come on climate change, sustainability issues, is on resilience of our community, and who it protects. And um, and those do come out of the, the housing strategy elements. And so, um, I, I guess I have to say that almost, unless you guys really go a different way on some of these priorities, my sense is that staff really does have to focus on housing and economic development as, as kind of the drivers, while taking into account the, all these other priorities that you have on the list. So, I, I mean, again, you could give me a different direction, but I, I, in terms of where I think, as you said, I think some of the deadlines and things are, that's, that seems to be the push that, that I'm hearing for new staff focus.
I guess I would say too, that like, I agree, and I, I kinda feel like this list is, is in order for me. So, I, I'm a little reluctant to, if we wanted to just name two, the top two, I'd hate to lose climate change, quite frankly, from one of our top priorities. But for me, the, the, they're definitely, they're in order of um, what I see as um, what we need to be working on. I don't know if we wanna say the super priorities rank order. Any other discussion? Alright, well, we can take that into consideration, we're- All right, well, we can take that into consideration, we're voting on this and in the next couple of weeks, and I think the next thing we're doing is actually talking about budget implications, and so that might actually have some people change their minds about whether or not we're narrowing down the super priorities, so.
We'll see.
Tell us the bad news.
Um, it's all doom and gloom.
Yep.
Um, the, uh, so I'll start a little bit, uh, with, uh, kind of what we know, where we are in the budgeting process, and then I'll move on to, um, what our plans are as we approach the presentation of the recommended, uh, budget. Uh, so, while we are, uh, right now, a little ahead of where we usually are at this point in the year, we still have a lot of unknowns. Uh, we've got all the preliminary, uh, departmental budget requests in, um, although there are still tweaks being made, uh, to some of those numbers, to, uh, some of the figures that have been included in the CIP, um, we're determining, um, we're, right now, we're weighing some recommendations by the Technology Steering Committee to determine which, uh, technology, um, uh, items, uh, we feel must be put in the budget. One, for example, is we, we have to do an overhaul of our telephone system. Um, it's something that we just are going to need to do, uh, within the next year or two, um, and that's one that's, uh, you know, very important to our business operations. Um, so, uh, so we, we'll, we'll probably, within the next week or two, um, arrive at a tentative bottom line, and I say it's tentative because there are things that are outside of our control timing-wise, like when we will get our, um, healthcare, uh, our new healthcare numbers, uh, we have, you know, we, we can project, uh, uh, an increase based on, uh, uh, information provided by our provider, our insurance provider, uh, sometimes that, that isn't exactly accurate. Um, we also have, um, just received the preliminary results of the class and comp study, um, that's been done, and we have a, a, a meeting scheduled next week to discuss those. Um, we think that there need to be some tweaks based on, uh, what information was included or not included. Um, and so, uh, so those numbers will also impact the budget. Um, the, a couple of things that we do know are, uh, the constant yield, we just received that information, uh, the week before last, and, um, it is pretty much, uh, right on target to where we are with the, the current fiscal year tax rate. Um, it actually decreased three thousandths, um, of a cent, uh, from our current rate, uh, which is fifty-two point nine-one cents to fifty-two point six-zero cents. Um, and, um, Arthur's going to call me out on my meth there, probably, but, uh, and, and we also know that just based on a multi-year, um, a multi-year contract that we have, um, that we entered into the last year with the, that, well, technically, I guess the year before last, with the, um, uh, union, that we can expect a certain per- increase in personnel costs, um, in the range of about three percent, and that's with existing staff, um, not adding any hours or, or, um, or FTEs. Um, and, you know, some things that we also know, um, are, you know, council has added, for example, an economic development manager position. Next year, fiscal year twenty, is the first year it's going to be, uh, budgeted at the, at, for, you know, for a full-time position, which means that's an increase in the budget right there. Um, you know, having, having, um, the new economic development manager, kind of looking at the lay of the land and, and identifying, uh, what she believes her needs are in order to, to get a, uh, a, you know, develop a realistic approach, uh, to econ- economic development, there could be some additional budget implications there, uh, some intern assistants or some part-time assistants, or, uh, some funds for contracted assistance, things like that. Um, not unlike when the new police chief came in, and he did a similar kind of evaluation, um, and, uh, we ch- changed some things in the, the police department's budget for the current fiscal year. Um, so, all that is to say, uh, we're just about at a point where we're going to see, um, how things fall out with, with the initial preliminary, um, uh, budget numbers. At that point, the city manager and I will kind of put our heads together, um, and, like I said, a- add some things where we think there, uh, there need to be, uh, there are priorities, um, priority items that be added, or take things out of the budget where we think there, uh, may be, uh, opportunities for, uh, cost savings, or, um, some things that we think we may not actually need to do. Um, when, when I was mostly joking earlier when I said it's all doom and gloom, but we do, we do, um, and, and, uh, reality.
Isn't that a joke?
Uh, we do, we do, you know, we've said all along, we anticipate that it's going to be a challenging budgeting year, um, and, um, and, you know, in light of the, the negligible change in the constant yield, uh, we, and knowing that our, what costs are going to, to be increasing, um, you know, we're going to be, uh, developing a recommended budget that reflects what we think, uh, the council, um, should adopt, and it will include things like, um, you know, a reserve that is consistent with the policy, that, a reserve level, that is consistent with the policy that you established last year. Uh, it will include things that you've already indicated that you want to do, like have an economic development manager position. Um, and, um, and, you know, that will result in the need to either increase taxes, um, or cut services.
So in terms of increased taxes, let me be very clear, that this is, that, that means increasing the tax rate.
Right.
Because it, with a flat constant yield, we cannot pay for the, uh, regular minimal cost of increase on personnel and some of these things without that tax rate increasing. Um, for a, for a homeowner, um, if your assessment went down, um, maybe it goes down far enough that your tax, that you put out doesn't increase. Uh, if your assessment went up, then it's going to even mean more, uh, money that you have to put out. We have heard that the Montgomery County Executive is not planning on changing their tax rate. Nevertheless, for the one-third of the county that was just, had their constant yield, the su- the assessments done, the overall increase for the constant yield is like six point nine percent, this just didn't happen in Tacoma Park. Um, so they're expecting some more money from that. What, what this means is, if people want to keep the tax rate the same, then programs have to be cut, people have to be cut. Uh, there's not a, that's, I mean, that's, that is the hard discussion, and, um, we don't know the exact numbers, we're, we'll, we'll know in a very short period of time, kind of, what, what, what's the mix, you know, what's that gap? But, um, it is, it, it will take some real discussion among you about, uh, you know, how you're going to focus the priorities, and, uh, for the ongoing services that we provide, what are you committed to? So, I think, you know, I, I do appreciate, and, and I think, uh, Deputy City Manager has done an excellent job in meeting with most of you about talking about what are ways to understand the budget, what are, you know, we're going to be providing information, although I, I am obligated to provide you with my best recommendation for a proposed budget, what does it mean, you know, if, if we had to keep the tax rate the same? What, what does that look like? What would be my recommendations to get to that? Or similarly, if, if I thought you could stomach a greater tax increase, tax rate increase, what do I think would be most effective in better reaching your priorities? And so those would be some of the discussions that, and, and pieces of information that we'll present to you.
Yes, and we'll, and we'll do our best to weigh those things. Um, the bottom line is, uh, the city manager has to present you with a recommended budget, uh, but when we do that, we'll also be presenting some other information, uh, like, uh, you know, here's, here's the recommended budget. If you want to keep the, the, the tax rate, um, you know, about where it is, maybe add some, uh, consistent with inflation and some of these additional things that you're already committed to doing, here's what the budget could look like, and here's what we think you would maybe want to consider cutting, uh, because there would need to be cuts there. Uh, so while we will pr- provide a, the recommended budget, we'll also, uh, be presenting with kind of additional information that you can use to help, um, in your discussions on, on how you weigh, um, how we should, how you should allocate resources.
Yeah, I think that's crucial, because one of the things that was, let's say, less satisfying about the last couple of budget cycles was that, to the extent we were looking for potential si- areas for savings, it was kind of just around the edges on maybe things that we had added ourselves the year before. And so just, you know, we may look at it and decide, hey, we can't get rid of any of those things, but I think it would be helpful to see what a version of that would look like.
Sure, and, and we plan to do that, and, and, um, we can provide some of the, you know, what is traditionally thought of as low-hanging fruit, where there are large chunks of money that aren't absolutely necessary, but, you know, as a, as a manager, we don't like to see cut because it could result in greater costs for, you know, things like street repaving down the road. Uh, but we can also talk about program, programmatic areas, um, that, you know, may be the least utilized or something like that. Of course, we have to factor in a number of things, like who the people, uh, who the residents are, who would, you know, be harmed if we reduced service levels or programs in certain areas.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, I want to thank you, uh, Mr. Dan Weber, for the, uh, work that you're putting in on the budget this year, and I know it's no easy task, uh, but you've touched on one thing that, uh, we have, uh, some of us have been very interested in for some time, and that is, you know, identifying reasonable things for, uh, tax reductions and cutting back expenses, really, and, um, you know, in the past, uh, quite often, as, uh, Councilmember Kovar said, it's, uh, it's, some of the suggestions have been, uh, seemed to be targeted towards things that the, that the city manager knew, and this is not our current city manager, but the, but the, uh, city manager knew would be, um, unpopular with either the community or the council, and, you know, we're looking for really advice on where we can, uh, save some money, and, uh, not, uh, not saying, well, we'll do away with the police chief, and that would save us some money, and nobody's going to do that, yeah. Um, but it does, uh, it does bring up the, the question that I, I'm hopeful that, uh, we can start to think about, and that is, um, doing more of a programmatic budget, uh, so that it is, uh, a little more obvious to the, uh, council and the community on how, um, how much these programs are really costing, so that when we go through our priorities, um, and start talking about new programs, we can also be looking at the existing program to see where maybe our priority isn't as high as the new things that we want to put in.
Sure, and, and, uh, well, to be fair, no cuts are easy cuts, because there are people who are, you know, harmed, um, because they're beneficiaries of those, uh, programs or services, but what we've heard you loud and clear about, um, the presentation of the budget and how you'd like to see, um, some more detail and, and breakdown when it comes to the cost for different programs or services.
Right, but the counterpart to no program is an easy program to cut, is that, uh, every program has some supporters.
Correct. That's what I mean.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, uh, things that we don't do now, the new, new things, there's always new proposals, and they always have supporters, but, uh, we can't pay for everything.
Great, all right, I think this was where the next, uh, conversation we'll have on this, um, is when you have more information on the budget, and then, um, we'll bring back our priorities, uh, to be voted on, uh, in the next couple of weeks. Um, our next item is our discussion of ordinance banning plastic straws. Um, everyone should have received, um, a copy of this, uh, is very similar to what had been circulated. I thank you, Councilwoman DeBala, for, uh, working with our city attorney, uh, to move this through. Um, this is a work session tonight, we are having a, uh, public hearing on this coming up in the next couple of weeks, and then, uh, we'll vote on it. We also did receive, um, today by email, um, feedback from, um, Old Town Business Association and the community, the Crossroads Development Authority, uh, regarding the impact on businesses in our community, uh, by, of this ban. So, I don't know if anyone has, yeah.
Could I, I made a few changes near the end of the process, and I just, I don't think everybody knows that I did it, and then, and I want to say what the thinking was on it. Um, the, the, um, the way that the ordinance was written, and I don't think it was intended to be written this way, and it went through several hands, so I, you know, how this happens. Um, but it made it sound like every business, every retail business that sold beverages needed to have straws of both plastic and non-plastic flexible and other kind of straws. And so, the way that I changed this after talking to several people was not to require businesses to have straws, but if they had non-plastic straws, that they also must have the flexible plastic ones upon request for those who are disabled and need them for their use. So that's, that was a clarification, I ran it past the city attorney, who said if that is the intent of council, then it's written the correct way. So, that, I just want to make it clear that the way that it was written would require any business that sold beverages to have two sets of straws on hand, uh, which many businesses don't have any straws, so there was that. The other thing, um, has to do with the, under definitions, non-plastic material, which I think is, uh, the first definition on the top of page two. Um, it says, it, the way it originally read was, it means paper, sugarcane, bamboo, rubber or metal. Um, I added, or other material deemed non-plastic by the city manager. I don't know if there's some other new things that are out there, but if there were glass straws or some other kind of thing that didn't really fall into the category of plastic beverage straw, which is fairly detailed, then I would like to at least have the authority to not have to come back to council and say, look, this meets the, this meets the criteria of a non-plastic straw. So, that's why I stuck that in there, I just want people to know that. So those were the two major, um, items that I put.
If I follow the first one you said, would you mind just repeating it, showing, pointing to where that appears or doesn't appear?
Which one?
The, the first one you indicated that you had.
I, well, it's not here.
Okay.
Okay, so the way that the ordinance, the draft was circulated a week or so ago.
I think you might not have seen that, if, go ahead.
It had, the way that it read was, was basically any retail business that sold beverages must have the non-plastic straws and must have plastic flexible straws, and, to be used upon request. And I removed that, saying that if a business has non-plastic straws, then they must have the plastic flexible straws for those who have disabilities and request them. So, I basically restricted to this, to only businesses that feel like they're, they want to serve with straws.
Not every business with beverages is a business with straws. That was the.
That was, that was the crux. If you guys want to go a different way, the, the way that it was written was something that would be really hard to explain to businesses. So part, so where this came out was, how will our neighborhood services team go out and educate and enforce the ordinance? And, and to make su- and to have them go into some business that doesn't want to have straws and say, well, do you have this kind of straw, and do you have this kind of straw, seemed like a step that was a little too far.
So there's just one question, and maybe you can let me know what you think about this. So, this could potentially lead more and more places to decide they won't, they don't want to have straws.
Right.
And so, that has an impact on those who need straws. That's the only part of it that worries me.
I think people who need straws bring straws with them, or if they know that a place normally uses straws, then they know that they could ask for a flexible straw.
Right, I guess, I, all I'm saying is, we don't want to have a situation where fewer and fewer and fewer places have the kinds of straws that we think are okay, just because they'd rather just not deal with it, you know what I mean?
Any business who wants to have some flexible plastic straws under the counter for somebody to ask, it's fine, I just didn't think it needed to be a requirement. So, I, it, it is not an ADA requirement.
Right.
So just be clear about that, it is not a requirement under federal law that places that have beverages have those kind of straws.
Can we back up just a step? So, how we got into this is, we, we had residents that came and asked for this as a complement to the existing set of environmental restrictions that we have for polystyrene, for plastic bags, et cetera. Um, we had, uh, the Committee on Environment recommending that we do this, uh, and we had a bunch of middle schoolers do a really great presentation on why we should do this, and also they've been out in the community talking with businesses, as you just heard Laurie, um, so- summarize earlier. Um, so this, this would apply to all retail establishments that serve beverages and food trucks and other, not, not just permanent. trucks and other, not, not just permanent stores, so that's something to think about. There, there are two issues that keep coming up, and one is this one about people with disabilities. So the original language that was in here, which I think we have now returned to, is the language from the Maryland Disabilities, uh, Commission, and they had recommended that if you, if you have straws now and you switch to non-plastic straws, that that leaves a group of people in the, out, out, that need to have the flexible plastic straws. So that's the intent, is to have those straws available for people who happen to have a disability and want to go out casually, at the spur of the moment, they don't have their straw with them, they can still enjoy going out with their friends. Um, it's the, the disability language has been run through a few people who live here, through PASNA, um, through the Maryland Commission, uh, Disabilities Commission, the Environment Committee did a lot of work on this, actually. Um, so that, that's one, one thing that's really important to me is we, is we have that in here, and we do. The other thing that keeps coming up is the cost and transition, and so both of, of moving to the other straw. So, so as we had with bags, as we had with polystyrene, it seems to me that a transition period and maybe some words about how we're gonna, how we're gonna help should be in here. So the effective date is, is blank at the moment, and, um, both OTBA and Crossroads, Community Business Association, neither one of them opposes this, but they both said, what's a reasonable transition period?
There, there is language in here about that, that the city manager shall provide notice of the restrictions and education at least 180 days before it becomes effective.
Right, I was just, I was just getting at that. And so that's, so they keyed off on that and recommended that we have that 180 day transition period for, particularly for the smaller minority owned businesses along New Hampshire Avenue that have closer part, profit margins, and for whom, um, the impact of switching might be greater. The, the Committee on the Environment tried to cost out what the different prices are right now, and it was kind of all over the map, like, one straw is this much more, you heard the person here today say, another straw is about the same. All I can offer is that the district is now enforcing, has adopted and is now enforcing their, their, um, ban on plastic straws with certain exceptions, and that's gotta be a bigger market impact than Tacoma Park switching. Montgomery County isn't very far behind us. So I'm, I'm hoping that with an adequate transition, that'll, that'll ease that issue, we'll be able to work on, work that issue out. Um, so that was, those were the things that I wanted to point out. The district's already got it, what, what the two business associations said, and how we can handle that.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Has the district had any examples where businesses, whether it's a restaurant, they offered straws, right, but since they didn't want to offer this alternative, that they just stopped?
I don't think we know that yet, because it's new.
Okay.
Just starting generally.
Yeah, it just, it just started.
All right.
So that's a good question, I don't know the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Probably, probably somebody decided to do it, but I don't know.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Um, thank you so much for the, the explanation. Um, I think that there are a couple of points that were raised. Part of the challenge is going to be education. Um, you'd already mentioned the fact that those businesses that currently don't provide straws could read this and still read this and be under the impression that if they sell beverages, that they need to at least have flexi-straws on hand for any patrons that might have a disability.
Yeah, we want, we want to get that right.
Yeah, so, so that, that could potentially be a challenge. Um, the, um, the, the person who came and kind of explained the difference between the corn or other plant sources that is different, or it's considered plastic, which is not a non-plastic material, which also includes plant sources like bamboo. Um, so, I, I do think that, um, whatever we can do to make that clearer, it is my understanding that there may be some businesses in the Crossroads area that have already taken the step of getting com- compostable, um, straws, and now they're being told that that's not good enough anymore. Um, and so, whatever we can do, and I'm, I'm, you know, again, I'm, I'm new to this world of green, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying real hard to understand. Um, but, you know, making sure that it's clear enough in the ordinance, not for necessarily us, or the Committee on Environment to understand, but for businesses that we're actively trying to encourage to change their behavior, or new businesses that may be coming to the community could open this up and understand.
So, it, I do not think we have to have the ordinance be completely clear. Um, it needs to be correct, and our staff that does the education needs to have separate materials that are very clear, and they do this already when it comes to the issue of plastic bags. You know, what counts as a dis- a disposable one-time plastic bag versus a reusable plastic bag? So they have examples, they go out to the, they have like pictures of them, they have descriptions, they have brochures, they have, they go out door to door, that kind of thing. So that's similar kind of campaign would need to be done for this. Um, you know, it's, I, I do want it to be an understandable ordinance, but that is not what we will send out to the, to a business.
I think, I think it needs to be clear, I don't think it needs to be detailed.
Right. So someone needs to understand the difference. I, I, I'm, I'm not saying that it necessarily needs to be in the ordinance, but like, if you're a new business coming here, you want to open a restaurant here.
Right.
Where would you go to find out you can no longer have plastic straws or plastic bags?
Right, well, right. It's on the city website. Right, yeah, right now, it's on the.
It's on the city website, and for the plastic bag, do we have a, um? I have to look, but we have had, in the past, really good location sites just for a regular user to know, do, can I buy this, or that, or do I, or am I not supposed to do that? The other thing that we're doing is also just our real outreach to businesses in general, and now particularly, uh, with some of our gains onboard, there's a lot more of that as well, you know, so that there's handy, you know, our goal is really handy things. Here's what you can do, here's what you can't do, here's sources of help, and so.
And, and in this case, um, I think I'm right about this, our code folk person has been working with the, the straws group to develop the materials that the straws group has for businesses which are relatively.
Well, we paid for some posters, but I think, but I, but I think, you know.
But there's education materials already, is what I'm trying to say.
So is, so, and, and I'm sorry, it's late, I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah.
So when we create these types of resolution, are they codified, are they in code somewhere? Like, so is it not just in terms of materi, like, communication materials, but this would also be something that would be, um, codified?
Right, this is, this is amending the Tacoma Park Code Title VIII business.
Okay, so then, the, the, the answer would be all of the detail in terms of what, with, what is in and what is out, and allowing for the flexibility in terms of the language deemed as non-plastic by the city manager would allow you to make the necessary changes to the code, which wouldn't require changing the actual resolution?
No. No, this is, this, this is, this is an ordinance to change the code.
Okay.
So the language, the, the part of the language that is, is section one and down from that, that will be in the hard copy of the code, it'll be online as part of the code. Very few people, except for lawyers, go to the code to find out what they can do and what they cannot do.
Okay.
What we instead have are brochures, forms, informative letters, they, door to door, hi, I'm your friendly neighborhood services team member, and things to go through and, and help, and the, the two business association folks really help with that as well at their meetings. So that's where the real explanatory helpful information, you don't want to read one thing over here about straws, and one thing over here about bags, and one thing, you know, you want it in a, in a place, so, and a different place about recycling, you want it in a handy thing. As a business, here are your things, here are the requirements for Tacoma Park. And so that's, so that's our goal, is to always have it in a really handy way. Yes, this will be there in the code, if you're really searching for it, and the, and the attorney helping you set up your business will, can review it. Otherwise, that's not how you're going to find out the information.
And I think also, just like when we, like, similar to how we were doing cell towers, we were like, you know what, that goes in the admin regs, because we don't want to have so much detail in the code, because then that has to come back to us, and then we have to redo it, do a two reading, and it takes more time, whereas, having the flexibility where things either go to the city manager or the head of public works as things are changing, and on environmental issues, things change.
There might be some new technology, yeah.
So there would be admin regs for this? I thought there would be nothing.
I don't think, there doesn't need to be admin regs.
That's what I'm trying to understand, like, is this all there is, and then there's education materials that we go around?
This is all there is, and there's education materials, but the reason that I added in, instead of saying, yes, we want admin regs, because it is a pain to draft admin regs, uh, but the reason that on the non-plastic material definition I added in, or other material deemed as non-plastic by the city manager, is to give flexibility on that area where I could see there being changes over time in technology or something.
Okay.
So that's, so that's, that's why I put it in there.
Okay, that's what threw me off a little bit, sorry. Because then when I see stuff like that, I'm like, okay, well, there's a reg somewhere that's going to explain to someone what that is.
Well, the, the issue is, the way this was written, and I'm working with something already written, under plastic beverage straw, it's very detailed. However, it was clear to me that there could be something that's not in the, that's not ruled out under, as plastic beverage straw, that isn't listed under non-plastic material. So that's why I wanted to have something that says, you know, for those things that aren't specified here, then there's a judgment call about, is it something that's easily compostable or not?
Okay, um, all right, I, I, I'll, I'll get there. Um, so that's one piece, just making sure that that distinction is clear. Um, the other piece is about, um, giving more implementation time, um, which I think is, is very valid. Um, a number of, um, I've heard from Kaylee multiple times, like even the plastic bag ordinance, um, you know, CDA spends a lot of time, energy, and resources to make sure that the businesses in the area have access to, you know, appropriate bags for their, for their patrons. So, and there's usually a lag, and it usually costs, you know, in terms of getting people to adopt, it might cost some programming dollars to do so. Um, so in terms of the plastic bag example, do we, did we do any additional programming to try to help, and how much, like, if we're thinking about this in terms of budget, how much does that type of programming typically cost? Because I could imagine us doing something similar here.
So I've, when I looked at the fiscal, when I thought of the fiscal impact, I, I've, I've had it very small, because we have materials that we've already designed for the plastic bags and some of the other things, and I felt that we could just, as we update those, add in this information, so it doesn't take a whole rethinking. Yes, it will cost some, but it's, it's not, it's not substantial. We, you know, at the time when some of the original, um, changes to the recycling and the plastic bag ban and stuff came online, we hired another neighborhood services team member. I mean, that was a big deal.
Well, that was several ordinances all at once.
Exactly. And, and so, but, but that person, but that extra person then has capacity, I think, to, uh, build this in with not a lot of actual cash expense.
And to be more specific on the bags, Crossroads and the city together, and I, I don't remember who paid for it, did a bunch, Crossroads, yeah, okay, did a bunch of bags, and if I understood correctly, that Plastic Straws Committee with their starter kit and Crossroads and the city, and code enforcement officer are talking about something simple, similar for, for the straws, to get businesses that need the help to get them started.
Right. Well, it's, it's important to keep in mind that with the bags, it's still an ongoing thing.
Right.
So it wasn't just a one and done.
Right.
So, I could imagine that if we ultimately want people to, the point that was raised earlier, um, if we don't want businesses to just say, well, to heck with it, I'm not going to offer any straws at all, right, which is a, a possibility, um, and we want to encourage use of the, the types of straws that, that, that we're putting here. The goal is not necessarily to completely say, no one in the city can have a straw, but these are the types of straws you can have. Um, because of that price difference for some of the small businesses, providing them with regular straws as we provide them with bags as well is something that's an incentive for them.
Right, I think, I think one of the issues and the reason that we're, we're trying to, you know, think about a more systematic way of doing this, um, as, as we do education, is that there's a number of businesses that aren't in either of our business areas that have, so those are standalone folks, they don't have people going to them saying, here's some bags you can use, whatever. So part of that is how do we approach them, and how do we make this, um, you know, something that they can deal with? It's going to take some time, it will take a little bit of money, it doesn't actually take a lot of cash, because we, we have stuff we can do with that. Um, but it, but it is some time.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Um, can I just ask one thing, um, because this came up, the, with the plastic bag ban that we actually have to review, because we put in there two years, do we need the clause that says we're going to review this after three years?
That was in there because, think, because technology changes.
Well, if technology changes, people can come to, we can, it's not, like, we can do that, and we can say, technology changes, groups of residents who are very interested in this issue can come back to us and, um.
I don't think we need to have it. I, you know, that was part of the reason I put the, or is deemed by the city manager.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm, you know, obviously, it's up to you guys, but I, this is one of those ones where we would have to, like, somehow have a tickler where it comes back to you, and, and that's sometimes tough.
Right, so, right, I mean, because technically, we should have looked at the plastic bag.
Yeah, I just, I just asked the mayor the other day, because the time elapsed for this.
So I, I would really like to take that out and just. Especially if this is going in our code.
Is there a, is there a straw voted for us to take out?
Raise your straw.
I didn't even know it was funny.
All right, everyone, raise your hand if you're okay, striking eight point five, two point oh five oh. Raise your straw, good job. All right, um, let's see, Councilwoman Costa.
Um, I have a question about farmers market vendors. Has there been any outreach to Crossroads Market, and have vendors there expressed any, um, potential impact?
City staff, city staff have not done any outreach, so it would be the volunteers that have talked to folks.
I don't know the answer to that, but I can ask.
Yeah, I'd like to know more about how it would impact them, because I think that might be an area that could be challenging. And I, I'm also curious about food trucks as well, and whether the DC ordinance impacts food trucks or not, because if it does, I think it's a pretty easy, you know, food trucks in the area are going to get rid of their plastic straws. If, if it doesn't include them, then I think it will be a difference in Tacoma Park than in DC.
In Tacoma Park, if you have a food truck, you can't use any polystyrene, which is different than any other place, there's some various things. So we have rules about if you're a food truck and you go through and you get your okay to be in the city of Tacoma Park, we would add straws to that list.
Okay.
But that doesn't answer your question.
Yeah, I'm interested to know, though.
And I think it does, but I will check.
Okay, that would be useful. And then, just really small things, um, is there a reason why we're not listing DC in the, in the second whereas clause? There's, there's a bunch of cities listed that have, um, done this already, and it just seems like the elephant in the room, like, obviously, DC is this big thing that just did it right next to us. Yeah.
I think it's fine. I, it may be because the person who drafted this to start with was thinking that their disabilities clause is not, is helpful, as the rest of.
Well, I, I unilaterally added Garrett Park in here, since they just did it, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add DC. Okay. And then, just really small, I think there's a period missing right before the now therefore be ordained.
Yeah.
Cool. Um, Councilwoman Kovar?
Thank you, um, I'm a strong supporter of this, and I appreciate Councilmember DeBala. Thank you, um, I'm a strong supporter of this, and I appreciate Councilmember Dibala's work, and, and the mayor's, and Councilmember Smith pushing it, and, and others as well, and the staff, of course, doing all, a lot of the work. Just a few ob- observations, um, on the, um, phase in. I think it's important to have a phase in for the reasons everybody has said, but if you banned it right away, all that would happen would be people have the straws, they just throw them out, and they end up in the, in the waste stream anyway. So it probably makes more sense to, to have a phase in period for that reason as well. The one thing I would suggest we consider adding, which we don't have in the whereas clause, is, is a whereas clause stating that there are some people who need to use straws because of their disabilities. And, and to me, that's the sort of central thing here, that we just have to make sure we get right. And I don't, I haven't thought through what the language should be precisely, or where it would go within there, but I think something recognizing that, because then if a business person or, or one of the business associations is looking at this, they'll have a clearer understanding of why, uh, in, uh, I, uh, section D on, on the other side, uh, we, we keep that, so...
I, I think it's a reasonable thing to add that in for explanation. I do know that there's some caution, there's some caution about how the, how that's worded.
Right.
So we'll have to find that out.
Right. And then, the only other thing I would say is, I mentioned this before, and I mean, I've explained it well, Councilmember Smith asked about it with respect to DC. If we could just sort of keep our eye on this, assuming we, we pass it, and notice whether, um, there's any large percentage of businesses that decide, you know what, this is too complicated, I'm just not gonna do straws anymore, and have lots and lot, like, if every place did that and there was no place a disabled person could more easily attend, I think that would be not the result we're looking for. So I don't think that has to be written into the, into the law, but it's maybe just something the, we could somehow monitor.
All right. Council, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I would also like to join my colleague and thank Councilmember Dibala for leading on this issue. I think, you know, protecting the environment is extremely important. I wanna thank Councilmember Kovar for being a co-sponsor. And I wanna thank Tiffany from, coming all the way from Hawaii. I lived in Hawaii for three years. Went to Wahiu, Wahiu Wa Middle School. And, uh, I did my ninth grade at Le Lahua. Yep, where I was president of the class. So this is, uh, really extremely important. I hope that we can do more, um, legislation like this to protect the environment. And so I hope my colleagues will support this. Thank you. Oh, and one last thing, since we are seeing so many new businesses moving into the city, do we offer a welcome packet?
Yeah.
Either digital or analog that's, highlights some of these unique pieces of...
Not yet, but, but our economic development manager is, is talking about a twice yearly, um, reach out to, to all businesses, but partly, um, for exactly that purpose, to have them welcome.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right. Um, this will come back to us, or we'll have a public hearing, and then this will come back to us. If you have any other questions, in the meantime, um, you can send them on. Um, the last thing we have on our agenda before we, um, have an administrative function session this, uh, this evening is, um, Councilmember Siemens. Um, we are starting, um, as many people know, we, um, vote on appointments to our committees. Um, and we wanna make sure that, um, before we have those votes, we're reporting out, um, and having a work session on who has been applying and, um, this election the council is making. So I have asked the mayor pro tem to take the, um, lead on this. Um, and so Councilmember Siemens will report out on this.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, yeah, we have, uh, as you know, a number of boards, commissions, and committees that work with the council and, and help to do the business. We have several vacancies, and in fact, we're gonna talk about filling some of those vacancies in the next couple of weeks, but, um, we have, uh, we have openings on other committees. I don't have the list in front of me tonight, but I encourage everyone in the community to, uh, talk to your council member about how you might help and, uh, participate in the city business. The, uh, committees that are gonna talk about tonight are, uh, oops, I got the wrong list in front of me. Here we go. Uh, the Ethics Commission, there are two vacancies on there, and we have, uh, one applicant right now, Jess Braven from Ward Three. And I believe Councilmember Kostic has, uh, uh, recommended him for appointment. Uh, Emergency Preparedness Committee has two vacancies and two expiring positions. Two of the people have re, uh, the two that are expiring have applied for reappointment. That's Kathleen Quinn, Ward Two, and Claudine Schwaber, Schwaber, of Ward Three. And, uh, then they have two new people who have applied to fill the vacancies. And that's Stephen Schwartz, Ward Two, and Mary Jane Machui, Ward Two. And I believe Councilmember Dibala has endorsed these appointments. And then lastly, we have the Arts and Humanities Commission has four vacancies. Nancy Ilman of Ward One, uh, recommended by Councilmember Kovar. And Jean Frederick of Ward Three, recommended by Ms. Kostic. Uh, so if there is no objections to those, those will come back to us for appointment in upcoming meeting on March sixth. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for that. And with that, we will, uh, end our public meeting and move into our administrative, um, session. Thank you very much, have a good evening.